Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and invocation by Councilmember Don Rowe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat. I think I'm safe to say on behalf of the whole city council today that we wish all Omaha residents, businesses, and visitors a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Later on this week, we're going to gather with a family that we love and friends that we cherish and be thankful for the things that we have. And I think we should never forget the less fortunate among us and continue to do the work that we're doing to make Omaha all that it can be. In Omaha, we're thankful for the blessings that we've been bestowed and we look forward to a great future that lies ahead. We move forward together. It's a wonderful time to be a part of Omaha and to celebrate the wonders of the upcoming holiday season. I hope you have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
An affidavit, a publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We look forward to hearing your input on our various items we have today. I want to encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least turn them to vibrate.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Emmanuel Lakeside with waivers for sidewalks, roadway width and cul-de-sac width located southeast of 177th and Francis Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Thank you. This item was postponed from our November 9th meeting and had its public hearing and vote today, and I believe we also have a floor amendment. Proponents, please, on number five, or number six, sorry.
Yes, good afternoon. Jeff Lake, 21008 Cumberland Drive. Here also with our team Rhonda DiStefano and Tammy Seeler with Emmanuel, David Levy with Baird Home, and Anthony Kreitchi and Luke Weatherly with Olson Associates here for questions. This one was laid over from two weeks ago. We had one item that we needed to get worked out with the planning department. It had to do with connections on the west side of the project. We've got that worked out and a compromise with planning that will change from two connections on the west side of the property along 177th Street down to one connection. The primary reason for that had to do with topography and grades. We found a location where that would work and can compromise on that. A little bit more on the project. This is a first-stage housing project that Emmanuel's taking on as a part of their campus. We have 46 single-family homes planned for this site. Uniqueness of this, these homes will be owned by Emmanuel, the ground underneath them, and then the homes themselves will be owned by the homeowner. So it created a little bit of difficulty with codes on how we did that, which is why we had some of the waivers in front of you for some of the street items and sidewalks. We did go to the zoning board of appeals and received a waiver for the driveway distances, and that's in hand. And I guess we ask for your approval of this with the removal of, I believe it's condition two in the recommendation report, or the modification, I should say, instead of two sidewalk connections down to one sidewalk connection on the west side. So with that, we'll be here to answer any questions you might have on the project.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make an amendment to this, so I'll probably make the proposed amendment first and then conditioned upon, or make the motion conditioned upon whether or not the amendment's accepted. So I'd like to amend it so that condition number two on exhibit B to read, quote, "Provide for one sidewalk connection from Street B to the sidewalk fronting 177th Street," close quote, and then revise the preliminary plat for the changes accordingly.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
And then as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Jackson Tower, replat one, located northwest of 27th Street and St. Mary's Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Kyle Hossi with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, along with myself. Mary Fraser-Ments is with me as well in the audience. She is the Director for Youth Emergency Services. The property that we are discussing today is on the corner of St. Mary's Avenue and 27th Street. It currently has Jackson Tower and the abandoned Omaha Housing Authority building on there as well. We are proposing to replat that property into two separate lots with Jackson Tower being on one, and the old Omaha Housing Authority building will be refurbished and added on to provide services for youth emergency services. Along with the plat will be rezoned from currently its R8 to CBD zoning. I believe coming up, we will also have the final plat and a special use permit for the services that Youth Emergency Services will provide as part of their building as well. Mary's going to provide a little speech on what Youth Emergency Services provides to the community.
Thank you, Kyle. Hello, I'm Mary Fraser-Ments. I don't know if you can see me.
You can adjust them a little bit if you want.
And I live at 14115 Hartman Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you for your time today. We currently serve youth experiencing homelessness. Councilman Rowe talked about youth who are people who are vulnerable in our community, and there's no more vulnerable population than youth who are not able to have housing and live on the streets. So we've been in existence since 1974, and we provide a number of services, including basic needs through our street outreach center. We have a shelter, and we have housing programs. We propose to move all of those services and our administration office into this building, which is at 27th and St. Mary, and we will be able to provide more young people services and provide services when they need them. We help youth who are experiencing homelessness or near homelessness get back on their feet, get critically needed resources that they need to be successful, and help them move on and be members of our community. So we will put more housing available for the young people. We will expand our street outreach center to two levels. We'll provide showers and laundry and basic needs, food, clothing, hygiene items, and case management for those young people. And we will provide shelters, 16 shelter beds for young people who are currently on the street and need to get out of the street and into housing. And then we have longer-term housing programs where we have one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. So we're really excited about this, and our administration office will be right there. We'll have job readiness there. We'll have a nurse, a therapist, and all the services that they can access right there on the spot instead of driving to our seven locations across the community. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. And thanks for your work in the community, having toured your current facility. I can see why this is exciting for you and have it all centered in one place.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mary, I wanted to thank you as well for the work that you do. Obviously, challenging times with COVID has made a lot of these problems worse, and having that facility down there where it's located there, where it's proposed to be located, that we're voting on today, I 100% support it, and I want to thank you and your staff and everybody there on what they do for homeless young adults to get them back on their feet and off the streets and give them the basic services they need to try to get their lives in order. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
I always forget that part. I make a motion to approve this. Please, Mr. President, thank you.
Second. Now for the lights, roll call.
Johnson, Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Items eight through 11 can be considered together for Hanover Falls Center located northwest of 156 and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items eight, nine, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R6 District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items eight, nine, 10, and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
I'm Kyle Hossi with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. The property that we are discussing today is on the corner of 156 and State Street, the northwest corner. It is the smaller part of a larger project as a whole. The outlined area here shows the roughly 46 acres that cover the project as a whole. This highlighted area shows what the Phase One that we are discussing today. Everything that's kind of scaled down is the rest of the mixed-use project. There is two lots, lots one and lots two, that we are looking for the rezone to R6, and then there's Outlot A, which is the water quality basin, which will be Zone DR. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Johnson, Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eight through 11 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 12 through 16 can be considered together for Pacific Rose located at 9402 Pacific Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees Communications. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property from R1 District to R5 District. Item 13, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Items 14 and 15, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 12 through 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Eric Weasler, 9217 Davenport Street. I'm the developer for this project, Pacific Rose. We're at 9402 Pacific Street, and this is a rendering of what we're looking to put in place here. We have a 21-unit townhome project that's arranged in three-unit buildings over the lot. The site is just over two acres of land, and the townhomes are designed to be two-and-a-half story, around a couple thousand square feet, and our target pricing is going to be around $500,000. There will be some options where that could go north of that if people choose to go that route. The site itself is a pretty heavily treed area. Here's another rendering of that property. But this is a site plan here that kind of shows the layout and our landscaping plan. We're taking great care to maintain the perimeter canopy and trying to maintain and keep as many trees as possible. We think it's going to be key to facilitate a quick sale on these properties, and we're also enhancing that perimeter and also the interior of the development with a heavy amount of landscaping centered on pines and spruces on the outside. We want to kind of create an insulated neighborhood there that just makes people feel like they're not in the middle of the city, even though they are. We have reached out to the neighborhood. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and from that, there were some concerns with the amount of guest stalls. We've got two garage spaces with each unit, and then in addition, there's two off-street parking stalls for each unit, but we've added 13 guest stalls in response to that meeting as well. We're also happy to report that we do have the support of our only boundary-sharing neighbor. The majority of our boundary is actually OPPD land on both the east and north side. So our only boundary-sharing neighbor that really has anything to say about it is the Baptist Church to our west, and I'm thankful to report that they are in support of the project. So they wanted us to do a fence along that shared boundary, which we've agreed to do, and they're happy to lend their support at this point. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, and I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Eric Weasler just stated, the Church to the West has signed off on, if you will, signed off, has worked with the developer to find a solution for the fencing along the west boundary line. I just wanted to bring that up because I know in some of the correspondence we got initially, they were not on board, but because of the conversations and willingness of all parties to get together and come to a solution, they're now lending their support to the project. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. No further lights, roll call.
Johnson, Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 through 16 are approved, seven to zero.
Thanks so much.
Item 17, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow small group living in the R4 District located at 5008 North 60th Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This item was postponed from our November 9th meeting. The public hearing and vote continues today, so we'll take any proponents that want to speak today. Seeing none, any opponents? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Davis, you're by Zoom. Would you like to unmute you here in a second and have you speak as a proponent? There you go.
All right, thank you. So I guess I don't have to do the same thing. This is Linda Davis. The property that we're talking about here today is 5008 North 60th Avenue, and again, I am seeking approval from the council to operate this small group living slash transitional home for women. And just as a reminder, this transition home provides a safe, clean, and comfortable environment for women to live. We also provide individualized case management services, training, so that these women are successful when they do re-enter their community. I did have a chance to speak with the councilwoman. She actually came over to the house, and so I was able to answer any questions that she had at the time. And so I am just here again for this follow-up, asking the council for approval.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank my fellow council members for allowing me the opportunity to go out to the, to this location to satisfy my concerns about the group home. Secondly, I would like to thank Ms. Davis. We did meet, as she's already indicated, and I'm very confident that the place that she's providing women services to is very clean and above-board, and so for that, I will be making a motion to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 18, to consider a Class D liquor license for Casanova's Buttery located at 10914 Elm Street. Is request to amend to a Class D liquor license.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Ms. Miller. We'll take you off mute here in a second. She is not on. All right. Are there any other proponents for item number 18? Seeing none, any opponents? I won't close the public hearing yet to see how the council would like to handle this. We typically do require someone to be here for this.
There is not time to lay it over.
You'd allow, Mr. President? Because, I mean, this is, it's not a bar. It's, it looks like they're selling meat and wine, so it's off-sale only.
Okay. Why don't we move that to the end of the agenda? Seeing no objection, and we'll see if that applicant might be available at that time. Next item, please.
Item 19, to consider a Class D liquor license for Jaipur Dundee located at 5018 Underwood Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents?
On behalf of the applicant, Andrew Collins, 10330 Regency Parkway Drive, 68114. I represent the applicant on this application, just here to answer any questions the council may have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Collins, I had just one question for you, and this is the only question I get about this application with Jaipur coming into Dundee, which is, how soon will you open?
The current plan is they're hoping to be open in the middle of December. They've got a little bit of construction yet to finish up. We'll have the fire department through hopefully by the end of this month. If not, beginning part of the next month, and then early to mid-December is the targeted date.
Good news. People are excited for it. Thanks.
They are as well.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 20, to consider a Class IK liquor license for Sierra Hall located at 5716 South 36th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Hello, Kevin Swarick, 5849 South 48th Street. I own Mr. Bus across next door, and I have a parking lot over there, and the halls always had problems with people parking over there all the time and taking up my spots, and I was going to see what they were going to do to actually have more parking for the hall because they have two halls in one place, so I don't know what they're going to do. And I have kids hanging out there all the time, and it's like you tell them one thing and they just won't listen to you. So are they going to have somebody actually watch parking lots and all that stuff, or are they going to change it? You know? Been dealing with it for 20 years. Gets old, so.
Thank you. We'll ask those questions here in a minute. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I also will not close public hearing on this one, seeing as the applicant wasn't here, but I'll recognize Mr. Palermo.
I just wanted to ask the city clerk, as we did earlier, about time for a layover on this.
There is time to postpone this one.
Well, I think it's only fair to put it to the back to see if the applicant shows up. Obviously, we have people that I know, business owners in the area, that have some questions that could probably easily be answered, but I want to give this license holder, a future license holder, a chance to answer. So what did we do last time? Just make a motion to put it to a certain item number?
Absent objection. We can just move towards the end.
Okay.
Seeing no objection, we'll do that. And take that with number 18 at the end as well.
Item.
And if you don't mind sticking around, sir, we'll do that towards the end, or else I'm sure Councilman Palermo will be in touch with you. Either way.
Vinny, you want to just call me?
Yeah.
All right. Next up.
Item 21, to consider a Class Z liquor license for Sagoon Distillery located at 1725 North 42nd Street. Is communication opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Kelly by Zoom, I believe. Is that correct? All right, we'll take you off mute here in a second. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I just. Did that mean to talk about this?
I think we might have the wrong, we're looking for Mr. Kelly, who seems to have chopped off the call there. Are you the applicant for number 21?
Yes.
Okay, please, your name and address. Go ahead.
My name is Man Mager. My address is 1725 North 42nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111.
Great, I hear you answer questions, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Antonio Moore, Executive Director for More Than Just a Village Academy. I live at 4205 Franklin Street, literally maybe 400 feet from the proposed expansion. I mean no ill will to Mr. Sagoon and his business. I applaud entrepreneurship and think it's wonderful that he wants to do it. I just don't want it in our area. I've lived at that residence now for four and a half years. When I first moved in, it was what Omaha called a target zone. They were in the efforts of trying to make that a habitable area and neighborhood for families and kids. I have worked very diligently and faithfully to bring that community together, the neighbors. We now have kids that can play on the street. We've had some less-than-reputable individuals in homes selling drugs. We've gotten, worked with Omaha Police Department to get those things out of that area. It is becoming a true neighborhood and a community that we're all proud to be a part of. While I know this is just a business, there's already issues down there with abandoned cars that get left that are stolen. We've reported them to the police department. There are bike clubs that tend to operate their motorcycles at all crazy hours of the night. There's tattoo parlors over there as it stands, and adding one more element to that neighborhood is just getting to be too ridiculous for those of us that literally live feet from this area. While I know you're tasked with deciding who is eligible for these liquor licenses and expansions, I am asking on behalf of myself, my family, and our neighbors to deny this request. It's just getting to be too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today on number 21? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I see Mr. Kelly is back on. Mr. Kelly, would you like to provide comments as a proponent? Okay. Yeah, he has some audio issues, it appears, there. So we'll continue. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Well, in lieu of Mr. Kelly having some audio issues, I would like to put this at the back end as well to give him an opportunity to speak.
Mike, we can't, we're not hearing you. I don't know if you're on mute or not on your end. He is talking. All right. There's been a suggestion that we postpone it till the end so we can hear from Mr. Kelly. I don't see any further lights. Without objection, we'll do that. All right. We'll have a liquor license session at the end of our agenda today. It looks like. Next item.
Item 22, to consider a Item twenty-two, to consider a liquor license addition application for L Alamo Restaurant located at 4917 at South Twenty-Fourth Street to add space to their indoor licensed area.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, City Council. John Latka, 409 South Seventeenth Street in Omaha. I am legal counsel for L Alamo. I'm also here today with Ignacio Chavez, the owner of L Alamo, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here and not having audio problems.
You're welcome.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents, number twenty-two? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items number twenty-three through twenty-six were held on November ninth. Second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
I'll note that item number forty-three has been withdrawn. So the public hearings on agenda items number twenty-seven through forty-two and forty-four through seventy are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none. Public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seventy-one through seventy-three can be considered together for agreements with Union Pacific Railroad Company. Item seventy-one, a resolution to approve the railroad highway grade crossing closure agreement. Item seventy-two, a resolution to approve the pipeline crossing agreement. And item seventy-three, a resolution to approve the public highway at-grade crossing agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items number seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero, Johnson Epstein's. Item seventy-four, a resolution that the Omaha City Council encourages the planning department to complete the process of assembling the Affordable Housing Action Plan and is resolved to offer assistance in this endeavor.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-four is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members, Perry Nealon, 11830 Nicholas Street, representing the Omaha Area Board of Realtors. And we would just welcome the opportunity to be part of devising this plan as we further our efforts to promote affordable housing in the city of Omaha.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I'll just offer a few comments before we vote. I requested this item and the next item on, on the agenda, both because I think they're important, but also a bit of an outgrowth of our conversations with the city of Lincoln, the Lincoln City Council last week in our summit, covering a number of important issues, two of which were affordable housing and then climate action, which is the next item. And we do have efforts underway in the city of Omaha on both these topics. But I thought it important to reaffirm the City Council's support for them and also express some urgency around them in terms of them being a top priority. So with this particular item, the cities of Lincoln and city of, city of Omaha are actually required to fulfill an affordable housing study and submit that to the state under a legislation that was proposed by Senator Wayne. And we're gonna do that over the next year. But I think it's important also to recognize that we're interested in addressing this issue, even in the meantime, realizing there's some urgency around it, whether that's through the city's American Rescue Plan Act effort. We believe there'll be $20 million allocated to affordable housing that we believe can be matched with $20 million of philanthropic funding and hopefully additional funding to work with nonprofit and for-profit developers throughout the city to increase the availability of affordable housing throughout the city. As we've talked about a lot as a group, there was a recent study estimating about 80,000 units short in the city of Omaha, or the metropolitan area, I should say, to fulfill our current needs, let alone our future needs in that respect, that we think is very important, not only for our current residents, but as we try to attract additional residents in the workforce, we know we need to be successful. A very important effort. So while we pursue that, I also hope that this Affordable Housing Action Plan will also address a comprehensive view to include a perspective on our zoning code, on our tax increment financing policy and other incentives, to get all those things aligned as we work towards making this a better situation for all of our residents. Those are my comments. I see Ms. Melton also has her light on. You're recognized.
Yeah, I did. Thank you. And I, I just have some questions. We have, we've all been working on this. We've been working with different stakeholders and, and trying to determine, again, how we're gonna use those ARPA funds in conjunction with other philanthropic donations, which is great. Public-private partnerships are what this city actually, I think, does best among cities in our country. But Mr. Fanslaw, can I assume that you are going to be one of the key leaders in creating this Affordable Action Plan?
Dave, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, yes. My department will lead that effort.
Okay, and so who are the stakeholders that you're, that you will be bringing to the table? I know that obviously the Omaha Board of Realtors would like to be a, a part of that. At this point in time, do you, do you kind of have a, a general list of stakeholders that you're gonna be bringing to the table?
We don't, but we're currently working on that. So we, we sent out our, a request for RFPs a few months ago, interviewed four, five firms, have selected a preferred firm. And we're, right now, we're scoping that final contract, which will be coming before City Council soon. So part of that effort will be obviously outreach and team building and bring on partners to work with on this plan.
Okay, so you've got the RFP for a consultant to help put the plan together?
Correct.
And, and in with, working with other consultants, I'm involved in that on another project, then you'll be, you'll be able to provide them with contacts and people that you would like to be reached out to, or people who want to be a part of it or be heard from.
Correct.
For those consultants, they could reach out to you as well, right?
Correct. There'll be a considerable, considerable amount of outreach, public outreach as part of this plan.
Okay. And I, I think that's, that was my, what I wanted to just confirm is, are we making sure we're including all the stakeholders that should be included? And it sounds to me like through that, through that consultant, anybody who wants to have some input, at least can have some input. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I've done those before. We've done it with the Juvenile Justice Building across the street. And I have always been impressed that i-if you tell the consultants to meet with somebody, they typically will. And then just make sure that those stakeholders and others that this will affect, which is the entire city. But I just want to make sure everybody has a seat at the table to be a part of the plan. Thank you, Mr. Fanslaw.
Thank you. I want to follow up to, or Ms. Johnson, go ahead. I see every light on.
Well, I too am sharing that concern that everyone has a seat at the table. So this question is for Mr. Fanslaw. You indicated that you currently do not have a list of stakeholders. However, you will have some consultants that would solicit those. Upon that, will you notify this body of who those stakeholders are?
Yes, can, we can do that.
Thank you.
And then just one more question for you, Mr. Fanslaw, in terms of the timeline. I think, I think those comments were, were important, too. And I welcome the Realtors being here today to have that input as well. Describe the timeline a little bit and the contract you mentioned. The contract probably has to come to City Council, right?
It does, yeah. So we're anticipating that contract coming before Council, probably not by the end of the year. Hope, maybe by the end of the year, but with the schedule being what it is, so early next year with hit the ground running shortly after that. And as everyone knows, the deadline is January 23 for the plan.
And within that contract, I'm sure there'll be a description of their public input process and how they intend to do that.
There will be, yes.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Now for the lights. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventy-four is approved, seven to zero. Item seventy-five, a resolution that the Omaha City Council expresses its support for the development of a climate action plan for the metropolitan area.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-five is today. Proponents, please.
Mark Loskotoff, 6323 North, 115th Circle. We need an action plan. Our infrastructure is built on the assumption of unchanging climate. Now that we know that the climate is changing, we need the best available advice from experts in the field on how to best protect our metro area from extreme weather events. The plan should include resiliency, or how to protect from the effects of climate change, but also how to reduce the metro area's contribution to climate change. We owe that to our children and their children. We need to do our part. Finally, just as the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, the best time to plan for climate change was 20 years ago. The next best time is immediately. The need is urgent. Make a plan that works and do it quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, I'm actually Sarah Johnson. I live at 2316 North Fifty-Second, but I'm speaking on behalf of Mode Shift Omaha, which is at the CEC on UNO's campus at 6100 Dodge Street. Okay. Mode Shift Omaha is supportive, yeah, proponent, obviously. Mode Shift Omaha is supportive of a climate action plan for the following reasons. An effective climate action plan contains both strategies to mitigate the effects of climate change, like reducing emissions, and adapt to the worsening impacts of climate change. In the U.S., 29% of greenhouse gas emissions come from the transportation sector. The majority, 58%, of those emissions come from cars driven by people like you and me, just to run errands and get to work. We support Omaha in creating this plan to reduce the emissions and mitigate climate change and look forward to partnering on these strategies. Not only are cities with more robust transit, bicycle, and pedestrian infrastructure more climate-friendly, they're also great places to live. On the adaptation side, extreme weather is already affecting Omaha. And it is vital that this plan includes strategies that help people in Omaha get around in a lot of different ways, safely and equitably. Climate resilient cities do not invest the majority of resources into road widening and car-centric infrastructure. They create a lot of options for people in the case that one option does not work as a result of extreme weather or other climate impacts. Mode Shift Omaha is supportive and, supportive and excited about the potential for a climate action plan that looks strategically to the future, not just citing existing efforts and advocates for the inclusion of transportation equity among the other important sectors considered in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Is it possible for me to just speak for myself and say, of course, I support this? Sarah Johnson, 2316 North Fifty-Second. Thank you. Pastime, like the other guy said, but yes, not just words, action. Thank you.
You bet. Next proponent, please. We have several by Zoom, too. Just so folks know.
Hi, I'm Isabella Manhart, 3724 Gordon Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. I'm in District Three. I'm a high school senior, and I'm testifying as a proponent for the Climate Action Plan in Omaha. And I wanted to be the children we like to talk about with climate change. I wanted to represent that and my demands for this project. Omaha is not pioneering this process. I want to see urgency. We're really late to the game, and we need to be acting collaboratively. We need a plan that's ambitious and actionable and is very transparent in the process. The current timeline for this plan, I think, is really ridiculous. According to the World Herald, Omaha Metro Smart Cities is gonna start issuing requests for proposals and then select a consultant by mid-2022, at which point the actual development of this plan would take a year or two. And I'm sure that I'm just like an impatient teenager to all, but I think that's absolutely wild. We needed this plan decades ago, and now we're committing to spending the next two years trying to decide what we're gonna do about it. I think that's pretty ridiculous. And I'm worried that the vote today is just on whether or not to begin this process, but I really want to see it expedited. Omaha can't continue to pretend that we're making progress while really dragging our feet on crucial issues. The World Herald also reported that the likely impacts for the Omaha Metro include more illnesses and increasingly extreme weather. Many of you are parents, and maybe like me, your children spent a year and a half with remote learning because of the pandemic that we're not done with yet. So the prospect of more illness in this city rubs me the wrong way, as well as predictions of more extreme weather, which are notorious for keeping kids out of the classroom. Young people can't continue to pay the price for our city's climate inaction, especially if you want us to stay here. I'm a high school senior, I'm looking to go to UNO next year and go into education because I want to be a teacher in the city, but I want a city that cares about climate change and cares about the young people just as much as I do. The other thing I want to see from this plan is inclusion. A climate action plan for a city needs to engage in restorative practices for our native landscape. We have to consistently acknowledge that we are on stolen lands of the Ocheki, Shetouine, Omaha, Ponca, Pawnee, Oto, Missouri, and Iowa peoples. The climate, the city's climate action plan has to engage with local indigenous leaders in shaping our climate policy. We have the moral obligation to acknowledge the violence of our city's history as we shape the future of Omaha's interactions with the earth. And so our climate policy needs to be fair and inclusive and integrate all the stakeholders in this policy, not just the people who, whose voices have money behind them. Furthermore, I want to see young people being actively included in the development of this plan. Not only are we the major stakeholders in what the future of our community looks like, but we're already doing this work in Omaha. There are numerous youth-led climate activism groups that are already working in our city to educate themselves and others and advocate for sustainability. We actually have two chapters of the International Organization Earth Guardians here, which is completely student-run. We have Omaha Students for Sustainability, and we have various environmental groups that are working through high schools and through the university. So the development of a climate action plan in Omaha should, I think, include a youth advisory board that can help better engage and inform youth and the broader community. Climate change is a primary concern for my generation, and we really want to see at the table and tackling it at a local level. The last thing I want to talk about was accountability. Frankly, I don't expect this resolution not to be passed, but I'm really here to represent the public stakeholders, and particularly the young people who are watching what happens here today and considering their future here in Omaha. Climate activism goals may seem long-term, but ultimately, no one is more aware of how little time we have than the young people. We're really sick of being patient while the timeline for a tenable future in this city gets shorter and shorter. So please vote in favor of developing a climate action plan and then get on it, act with urgency, prioritize community engagement, and commit to mitigating Omaha's carbon footprint. The young people aren't waiting around for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
I'm Elaine Wells from 5005 Reed Street. I've been studying the climate for 20 or 30 years and have been an activist since the beginning because I heard a climate expert and professor of geology and other earth sciences back in the 1980s who said, "We put enough air pollution in the air in the 1950s to cause the climate problems that we're already experiencing today." So you can imagine how much pollution has been added to the atmosphere since the 1950s. We are already experiencing climate crisis. It's going to only get worse from here. We shouldn't wait until we're in absolute catastrophe before we start to plan and to not only mitigate, but actually try to reverse climate change. I would encourage all of you to read the book Drawdown, which offers 100 solutions to global warming, warming, all of which have been tested, and they can estimate the amount of greenhouse gases that could be either prevented from going into the atmosphere or sequestered. So it's not as if we don't know what to do. Scientists know what to do. And I think it's incumbent on all of us as citizens of Omaha, Nebraska, the United States, and the globe to do action that will actually prevent disaster for billions of people on this planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience? Seeing none, we have proponents by Zoom. Mr. Corbin, you're recognized.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is David Corbin. I live at 1002 North Forty-Ninth Street. I'm the Chair of the Energy Committee of the Nebraska Sierra Club, and I'm on the Advisory and I'm on the Advisory Board of the American Public Health Association's Center for Climate Health and Equity. I also taught energy policy at Creighton University, so it's safe to say that I have been working on climate change issues for decades. I strongly support developing a climate change plan for Omaha and the metropolitan area, and I hope that you would support not only local but state legislation for a climate change plan with emphasis on the three words I used earlier: climate, health, and equity. They are inextricably linked. I would be happy to work with those who are formulating a much-needed climate plan as we join the hundreds of other cities that have plans, and more importantly, plans that have measurable goals about energy efficiency, renewable energy, green spaces, active and clean transportation, reduction of proliferation of plastics, and other policies that promote the public's health and social justice. Thank you for the opportunity, and obviously, I hope that you pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh by Zoom, you are recognized. There you go.
I'm trying there. I have the advantage of seeing you. I wanted to have you see me as well.
We can see you.
Thank you. My name's Mark Welsh. I've lived at 5611 Howard Street for over 35 years, and I strongly support this process. I think there is some information missing, though, from your resolution. The questions I have is, who is interviewing and hiring the consultant to develop the Omaha Metro Climate Action Plan? How long will it take to complete this process and to have a final climate action plan? Could the city council amend this today to create a due date for this work to be done? As others have said, I agree, this needs to be done as fast as humanly possible. We now know that this should have started back in 1988, back when Dr. James Hansen first warned Congress and us about human-caused climate change that we are now experiencing. Human-caused climate change is happening. It is harming not only the people, businesses, and government in the Omaha metro area, but farmers and ranchers and other people, businesses and governments throughout Nebraska and the United States and the rest of the world. There are cities in Nebraska that are considering moving because of climate change weather. Any delay on meaningful actions will simply lock in more damage from more and larger storms, floods, droughts, forest fires, and wildfires, which are plaguing this nation and Nebraska. These things will cost the people, businesses, and government more money. Any good climate action plan will have the following points that could be done long before completing this process. You could change the zoning and/or building code ordinances to include these things. You could update the Omaha Code to match the international building codes on energy efficiency, the most up-to-date ones, not the ones from several years ago and watered-down ones at that that are currently in Omaha Code. You could prevent any homeowner associations from not allowing solar panels in their area. Maybe you could look into if state law needs to be changed to allow Omaha to overrule any restrictions that homeowners' associations have. You could require new buildings to be net-zero emitters of CO2. That would be an awesome thing to do. Buildings built today will be saving or wasting a lot of money through energy savings or use for two or more generations. I live in a house that was built five generations ago. That's how long we live in our homes in Omaha. In my lifetime of 65 years, CO2 levels have gone from 314 parts per million to over 414 parts per million. That's a 30% increase in my lifetime. I should say, my short lifetime. So I think you should take action quickly on this. I think you should set a due date for when this work needs to be done. And last but not least, I would like to know, how do I sign up to be a part of this group so I can help?
Great. Thank you. Next proponent is Frances Mendenhall.
Okay, I think you can hear me now. Is that right?
Yes. Your name and address, please.
Frances Mendenhall. I live at 3715 Hamilton. And I agree with some of the great insights that have already been offered here about codes, about transportation, and about just doing things that are not just about adaptation, but mitigation of our carbon emissions. I want to offer one more, and that's about the great work that the Omaha Public Power District is doing. They need to have an enormous amount of solar and wind, and I want to talk about solar in place quickly. And I think that the city of Omaha should be helping them by making it more likely that they can put solar panels on rooftops of places like big box stores, there's a lot of them, and school buildings. So that would help. They need to move fast. We want them to move fast, and that would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Volvolka. There you go.
Ellen Volvolka, 3719 Hamilton. I am supportive of this measure. I think it's important that we have some local control. And that means input from the public on the plan that's being developed. Lost audio there for a minute. Obviously, we need to do something sooner than later. There are things that several people have pointed out that we can do sooner rather than later, especially the building codes, because buildings last for so long. It's clear that doing this is going to help draw businesses and young workers, retaining young workers in Omaha. I think we're pretty much all in favor of that. And that decarbonizing the electricity is an important step in the process. There are ways that Omaha and the other cities in the area can work with OPBD to make that happen quicker. So thank you for taking a step. I really do hope you include input from the public so that we can tailor this plan to Omaha, rather than trying to adopt a one-size-fits-all plan. And as several people pointed out, we don't need to wait till the plan is done to start implementing the easy and quick recommendations, working on the harder ones later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am, in front. Are you a proponent? Did you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Give her a microphone for her, please.
My name is Jennifer Nye. I know this is kind of odd, but I went to try to call the City Councils of Omaha about this guy operating an illegal car repair business in Omaha.
Okay.
He took $900 of money, and he's got waste oil around his house and...
So I'm going to interrupt you just for a minute. We can have a staff person talk with you about that issue, but right now, this item is about climate change?
Yeah, this is about climate change. He's got waste oil in front of his house littered around. I mean, this is environmental.
Okay.
And 14...
So...
The address is...
Yeah, ma'am, we'll have a staff member follow up with you after this, if that's okay with you. We can't have this particular specific item discussion during this general discussion about a climate action plan.
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm accustomed to different cities giving public comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a staff member follow up with you. We appreciate you being here. Are there any other proponents on number 75? Seeing none other than any opponents. Public hearing's closed. I do want to address this just for a minute as well. I do think this was important to express our general support for a comprehensive approach to the metropolitan area towards addressing a climate action plan. This work is getting underway through the mayor's office and the city and Metro Smart Cities and partners like OPBD and MUD, which I think is very important, and I think that partnership is important as we talk about the metropolitan area because, as we all know, climate change doesn't recognize any political boundaries. They are beginning a process of having an RFP for a consultant that will lead this process and generate public input through 2022. But I definitely hear the input here today in that respect, and also the urgency around that issue. I do think it contemplates an 18-month timeframe, which I'd like to see go faster as well. So perhaps that's good input we can provide today to that effort to see if that can't be sped up a little faster than is conceived at this point. I believe that RFP would eventually have to come back to the city council anyway for that kind of discussion. So I do wish we were further along. I do feel urgency in that respect, and I felt the urgency when we talked to the city of Lincoln last week about their plans. They're actually much further along than Omaha is in this respect. They've already adopted a comprehensive plan. They're taking actionable measures to meet that plan. And what I like about it is, it is actionable. It does have very lofty goals and ambitions and seeks to measure them, but also has a six-year plan by which each of those steps is being achieved, and I hope that's something that ours will accomplish as well. I do think this will require some resources upfront for implementation, but I also think these efforts, when they're done well, typically do save money anyway, in addition to being the right thing to do for our climate and for the environment. And when you think about what can a city do or what can a municipality do in this respect, there's a lot of things we can do. In addition to just being the leader we should be in the community and in the country, think about all the things the city does impact as an entity. On our agenda today, for example, is a recycling processing contract we have later in our discussion. We had the purchase of new tree planting throughout the community today with Keep Omaha Beautiful. And we've had individual efforts that address things like carbon emissions and our waste collection patterns and our composting and how we handle OmaGrow, for example. We're making great progress in terms of converting our traffic lights and our streetlights to LED and saving not only electricity, but preserving the environment in that respect as well. We're expanding charging stations throughout the community with some federal funding options we've had recently. But we also need to think about things like our purchasing investments, our purchasing practices, things like plastic bags and plastic bag usage in the community, like we've discussed before, certainly recycling throughout the community. And also, sometimes this goes unknown or maybe forgotten a little bit, but our largest public works plan we've ever had, the Combined Sewer Orifice Flow Project, over $2 billion worth of construction in the community, does separate sewers, and there are benefits to that for everyone. But the main objective of that is to improve our water quality, right, in the Missouri River? So that's a major thing we're doing as well that I think should also be a part of this plan when it considers the comprehensive view. So having said that, I'll just say I'm supportive of this today. I think these comments have been valuable for us. We should take them into consideration and engage the mayor's office in that conversation, too, particularly around the timeframe, I think. But definitely support this going forward as we need to do our part like everyone else. Having said that, Ms. Melton has her light on as well.
Thank you. And I guess the issue that I have is I didn't hear anything today about the financial aspect of what we're going to do, the cost, what it's budgeted for, what we're looking at, and I was provided with a document of a draft plan literally 10 minutes before council today. And I have a lot of questions and concerns about what I see in here. Number one, there is zero financial impact addressed anywhere. I see a list of stakeholders that I believe should be expanded. I see that there's metrics reporting that I'm not necessarily sure I agree with. And again, nothing about the financial impact of the plan, what the code changes may be. We're talking about changing land use and code changes, and I don't see one stakeholder that actually is any kind of developer or anybody else that should be included. So I would have to agree with... Sorry, I forget. I'm going to have to agree with Isabella, who said, you know, "I think we need to expand the people that will be contacted," but right now, when I'm looking at this draft, it creates more questions than answers, and I'm just not going to blindly vote for something because it sounds good and not care about any of the details. So I do think the devil's in the details, and I have a lot more questions in regards to this action plan and what we're looking for from the consultant, and I think it should be changed. And I think maybe a lot more people should have some input in this before we just blindly say, "We just want a climate action plan at any cost." And it doesn't really matter who has input, as long as we have one. We're talking about utilizing and aligning with the global covenant of mayors. Not really sure who those are, but it's a demand for our consultant to do that for our plan. So because of the amount of questions, the fact that this was thrown on our agenda really at the last minute, I haven't been provided any briefings with anyone, haven't talked to anyone about this other than what I read briefly in the newspaper. And unlike the affordable housing, where we've been talking about it, we've had meetings, we've been talking about a plan, and we've done the briefings. On this particular, in this particular case, none of that has occurred. It just got thrown on our agenda. So without more information, I'm going to have to vote no on this today because I think that there's a lot more that needs to be addressed and a lot more people that need to be included in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some similar concerns. Although if the intention was to put this on the agenda for the sake of saying that we should take a look at this issue and know that there are things in motion to do so, I guess I don't have as much of a problem with that, but I, too, you know, just getting this document late, probably late this morning, right afternoon. And I, too, you know, I think included in this, and I know it's a draft, so I don't know what the timeline is of it. Maybe I could ask Mr. Anderson to come down. I just want to make sure, before I ask my question, Kevin, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing this right. And I know a lot of people think this should have been started a long time ago, and maybe it should have, but I think the key thing is that whatever we do, we want to do right, correct?
Absolutely. Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office.
Okay, so Kevin, could you maybe walk us through where we are or how we got to the point where we are and how long before this draft turns into a document that, I assume, the RFP does not come back to us for release? That'll just be done through the mayor's office, I would assume, but maybe you can address some of those issues.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. So this whole process came about in deep coordination and longstanding coordination with our partners out there, OPBD, MUD, our higher education institutions, who are, as was noted earlier, who are undertaking these sorts of efforts. And in that coordination came the opportunity to partner, to build off of a lot of those efforts, to see what we as a city, but it's important to note that this is a regional model for a climate action planning process. And that's why it fell or was tasked with the Mayor's Smart Cities Advisory Committee to really oversee the development of an RFP and planning process to get some opportunity for collective impact. With the thought process being, none of this happens within a vacuum. I give the example that as a metropolitan statistical area, we now have a population exceeding 1 million, whereas the city of Omaha's population is still slightly less than 500,000. So the city of Omaha itself makes up less than half of the population of our metro region. So the more we can regionalize this, include multiple jurisdictions... So the more we can regionalize this, include multiple jurisdictions, multiple entities, the bigger collective impact that could potentially be out there. As to the timing and especially the development of the RFP, which admittedly very much still in draft form, and, you know, sharing that, given this being placed on the agenda, to give council an idea of just where we're at in the process, but fully acknowledging that more eyes need to be placed on that, and that's exactly where we're at with this draft, is distributing that for additional comment for our partners out there, as well as our stakeholders, even within the City of Omaha, because the city does have the opportunity to take a bit of a leadership role in this as a function of being the Mayor's Smart City Advisory Committee, of which she co-chairs, but gives us an opportunity to get out in front, but, you know, fully admitting. And that's why we set a timeline of issuance of the RFP early to mid-2022 to get more eyes, get more input into the development of this. Because you're exactly right, Councilman Harding, you know, we've got an opportunity here to really do this correctly, do it right, and engage the people we need to engage in. All of that happens when you have a proper scope of services to start engaging the consultant community out there to make sure you've got a planning process that's appropriate for what you're looking to accomplish. And that scope, which is still very much in development, that we're continuing to get input on, is going to determine things like the extent and magnitude of public participation, which is a priority in this process. But with that comes a direct correlation with the cost that goes into the process as well. So that's why we aren't yet to that point, because as we develop the scope comes those important answers as to, you know, the level of public participation as well as the level of budget and financial impact.
So again, just receiving this draft, maybe a couple hours ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in my review of it, my quick review of it, there wasn't any information or contemplation of, as part of the metrics reporting, of the costs involved and the timing involved. And, you know, so I just, you know, was this ready for prime time?
No, it's still very much a work in process.
No, I understand that, but I mean, just the resolution, I mean, I, we all know that this is being worked on, so I just, I was kind of confused as to maybe why it was even on our agenda, knowing that it's in draft form and with stakeholders who have shown up today who would like to have some involvement in it, as well as some others that I don't think I see in here. I just, you know, I guess I was kind of scratching my head as to why it was even on our agenda.
Yeah, and we're certainly not here asking for approval of the scope or of a plan. You know, again, council's decision is the discretion here, but, you know, we're here kind of to speak to any answers of our process and establishing an RFP and some of our preliminary thoughts on how a planning process comes to fruition.
So I too get concerned when it says deliberables must utilize and align with the following, and it lists a group of entities that I have never even heard of them. So I don't know what guidelines we must abide by. So I just, I hope this draft form, you know, further develops and has, you know, kind of broader language in there so that, so that we can have, so that we can, if we end up with whatever plan we end up with, that it's attainable and that we also take into account, you know, how long it takes, the costs involved, but knowing that we have maybe not even an end goal, because I would imagine this would be kind of a living document so that we can continue to look at other opportunities where we can maybe make some changes that are going to have positive effects on not only our city, but on the region. So that's, that's, those were my concerns about this at this point. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Mr. Anderson, don't go far. Thanks, Mr. President. So I too received a text today saying I would receive this about 12:30. I didn't look at it till two o'clock, but it didn't take me long to recognize what you have stamped on every single page. Do you know what that is?
I do, yes, draft.
Draft. So I see the sides, right? I see the sides of how this is necessary. I see the sides of we don't know all the stakeholders who are involved. I see that we don't know what it costs, but with that sort of thinking, then our whole agenda, we could just rip up every week because of the change orders we see weekly from companies that have changes. And these are financials that are given to us that we approve, thinking that's all they're going to be. So I don't think it's a rush. I think everybody's right. I think for the last who knows how many years, anything you buy, you drive, whatever you have around your house, it's all to better the environment. So we've been working on it. We just, as the City of Omaha, the largest city in Nebraska, should probably not be on cruise control and hit fast forward on this. So, and I know that's probably what you had to do. You were at the City of Lincoln and City of Omaha meeting, as I was last week, and I didn't even know everything that we were working on as a city to move forward. So I appreciate that. And then putting this together, I'm certainly going to vote for it for the simple fact that it has draft on it on every single page. I see both sides, I get it, but it says draft. That means we're probably going to see some changes and probably better changes at that. So I want to appreciate our thank you, and I appreciate you putting this together like you did. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I too wanted to just let you know that I received the same communications, but I recognize too that it is a draft. We were at the meeting last Tuesday, the joint meeting with the City of Lincoln, and I think the question was brought up then, are we too late in the game? And the resounding question was, no, we're not too late in the game. We just need to get in the game. And so in talking to some of the people in the mayor's office, we are in the game. I mean, the work has been started, and I think that's what we wanted to communicate today was that we're not sitting back, not doing anything. There is a, there is a plan that's being formulated and being worked on. It is in draft form. If this was the final plan, I probably wouldn't vote for it either. But since it is just a draft, it's something that we're going to look at and will continue to tweak until we're ready to submit an actual plan, I think this was just a resolution to say, yeah, we know that we need to be doing something, and we're looking at it, and the city council is behind it. So that's where I'm coming from, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I think that's right. This is just a simple endorsement of the process that was announced publicly a couple weeks ago and the intention to have the city council be supportive of that process. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Anderson, you and I, or you don't have to get up, but you and I, a couple weeks ago, we had a nice meeting in Creighton University with some young environmental science students. And in my district, certainly, this is, I'm getting a lot of emails on supporting this as Council President Fesserson said that it's a draft, and I didn't get a chance to read the draft because I had meeting after meeting today, so I'll look forward to reading it. But is those Creighton University students, when we spoke there three weeks ago, you heard it as I did, and Ms. Manhart had spoke earlier, there are certainly younger students, college students, and, you know, people beyond that are interested in this. So I'm looking forward to working on this going forward, and once the draft becomes something we can sink our teeth into, I'll look forward to what we can support on that. So thanks.
Thank you. No further lights? Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow council members. I agree with everything that has been said, but more importantly, Mr. Corbin was on a Zoom call, and he asked the question, who will be doing the report or making the recommendation for the climate action plan? He also mentioned, when could we expect for the climate action plan to be complete? I think those are two fundamental questions, and I think that we should have some answers on those. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to address that?
Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office. Yeah, we believe that the Metro Smart Cities Group, the Smart Cities Advisory Committee to the mayor, co-chaired by the mayor, is an appropriate House or administrative oversight entity in the sense that it truly is regional in nature and includes a lot of our community partners out there, as I mentioned before, higher education, philanthropic leaders, corporate leaders, the development community, all involved in that. And that's why it kind of felt like a natural fit for the development and administration of this planning process, given it, you know, and I forgot to mention that it also includes the cities of Council Bluffs and Bellevue. And through this process, we'll certainly have a standing invitation to other communities in our MSA as well, again, to, you know, provide that collective impact or common strategies, common goals for us all to work towards. But given the public-private partnership of that entity and its regional nature is where we felt it was an appropriate resource or opportunity to task that group with oversight of and development of the planning process.
So if we have constituents or individuals within our respective districts that have shown an interest in participating in this, is that open?
Absolutely. We know this planning process to be successful is going to need to require a lot of citizen engagement, public engagement with our stakeholders. So absolutely. And again, as those kind of details are flushed out and further developed and a scope and RFP process, those will be widely communicated for avenues for which individuals or groups can provide their input to this process.
So can I tell my constituents that they can go out on the website to see when that open period is?
Not quite yet, but when we get there, absolutely. MetroSmartCities.org, I believe.
So then I can also conclude that you will put the when as far as the end date, the expectation of when this would be complete as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And fair to say the mayor is fully supportive of this process and engaging those partners, right?
Correct.
Thank you. No more lights? Second, Rowe Co.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item seventy-six through eighty-eight relate to the legislative package for the 107th legislature of the state of Nebraska. Item seventy-six, the resolution to request a bill be introduced to increase the cap in turnback sales tax.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-six is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Chalua.
Jachalua, City Lobbyist. Thank you, members of the city council. As a clerk mentioned, item seventy-six through eighty-eight is our state legislative package. I wanted to compliment the council. As far as I know, we do our state legislative package in a very open forum, open agenda, where all items are brought before the council and they're discussed, they're debated, we hear the pros and cons on them, and I think that's a good way to build a coalition and success for whatever items we do take to Lincoln. And so the first item, number seventy-six, would ask for an amendment to the Nebraska Convention Center and Arena Financing Assistance Act. This makes sense because the original act was passed in 1999 to help the City of Omaha form a triangular partnership between the state of Nebraska, the City of Omaha, and private donors in order to build the Convention Center arena site on our riverfront. And with that, we're asking for an amendment where we could seek additional funding back from the state of Nebraska. The original cap was $75 million. We'd like to double that up to $150 million. And likewise, we need a few changes within the law to do renovations, and they would be able to apply this funding to just upkeep, if you will, and then maybe the addition of a parking garage. That's item seventy-six, and I would ask for your support.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Image Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am being an opponent for this due to the fact that I think this should be added is if you want to increase the turnback tax for the expansion of the facility and a renovation and construction of off-street parking, I'd like to see you add increase to the percentage that is given to the North and South Omaha Turnback Tax Committee for grants. I think that's important. So if we're going from $75 million, let's put that in there, is let's increase that percentage so that there can be more done for, grants can be given for the purpose that it's set aside for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chalua, if you've got a second, please. I'm going to bring up something I just brought up at pre-council this morning, too, just so we have it on the record. But increasing the amount also is of benefit to not only what Ms. Weston was just discussing, but also with those in other municipalities, townships in greater Nebraska. Can you kind of explain how that works?
Absolutely. Thank you, council member. The way the turnback works is the state calculates the amount of sales tax that's generated on sales within the Convention Center and Arena, and then they additionally give us the amount of sales tax from hotels within, I believe the number is now 600 yards that measure either 600 yards or closer to the arena. And so the state of Nebraska counts that amount. They return 70% of the state's sales tax to pay off the bonded indebtedness of the facility. Thirty percent of the funds goes into a separate fund that's utilized to help cities in greater Nebraska. Those cities are allowed to apply for grants, that they put up matching funds, but essentially they can use that money to renovate their local city auditoriums, city opera houses. Sometimes it may be an application to maintain a movie theater, but it has to be a city-owned and operated structure. And with that, and Omaha's 70%, 10% of our funds are set aside to benefit North and South Omaha for the purposes of crime prevention and tourism promotion. I just want to point out that even though we're asking for a higher cap, the 10% amount would still stay the same, and it wouldn't necessarily grow or decrease. It just is based upon the amount of sales tax that occurs, you know, within the Convention Center arena and those hotels, so.
Yeah, thank you, because I think a lot of people don't understand that that extra 10% does go back into the North and South Omaha communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chalua, if you would, please.
Jachalua, City Lobbyist.
So along those same lines with that same agenda, item number, I thought the same thing as well, but I did have questions, and I knew, being part of that South Omaha Historical Grant, now Juanita will be part of hers as well, it's truly beneficial to reduce street and gang violence, the history aspect of what we can give to certain, you know, nonprofits in that target area. But wasn't it designed, or it was a dollar amount and a sunset on a year that it was soon to expire?
Okay, are you asking about the turnback program as a whole? Yes. I mean, the two restrictions the state of Nebraska put on these projects were you could have a maximum of $75 million of turnback, or we will continue to assist you until your bonded indebtedness is paid off, whichever comes first.
Okay.
And we have not paid off the corpus of the bonds yet on that facility.
Would you assume that this would increase that sunset time, then, obviously, to continue that 10% coming back to North and South Omaha?
Right. As we continue along, the fear was at one point we would hit the $75 million cap before all of our bonds were paid off. Therefore, we need to extend that amount, and as we do extend that amount, that means the 10% will continue to flow to both North and South Omaha.
Okay, thank you. It's good to hear.
Thank you. And I would just add, I'm supportive of this item, and I think I'll be supportive of each of these items we have today. The council's legislative committee did discuss these together with Mr. Chalua and relevant department heads, and part of the conversation we also had was being realistic in terms of the overall package the city presents this year, it being a short session. And when a senator asks you what your top priorities are, and if you have ten priorities are, and if you have 115 of them, that means you don't really have any, right? So I do appreciate the conversation we had about that in terms of prioritizing items. And I would note that items 81, 82, and 83 have been withdrawn, so we won't be addressing those today. And I do think that does make the overall package more strong and does focus on a couple of items we'll talk about here in a minute, in terms of catalytic converter theft and also mental health professions. So I appreciated that work together. And seeing no further lights. There's a motion and a second. I'll second it. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 76 is approved, seven to zero. Item 77, a resolution to request a bill be introduced to amend liquor license laws to bring private clubs under the bottle club statutes.
Public hearing vote on number 77 is today. Proponents, please.
Jax Chalua, City Lobbyist. Item 77 is pretty self-explanatory. Within state law, it governs liquor licenses and, and entities that are authorized to have liquor licenses. Through the course of, of years of amending the law, they implemented a statute that recognized and defined bottle clubs, if you will. And with that, we have found during the course of operations that there's a glitch or a little hole in the law, that there's private clubs being able to operate without having to be recognized and licensed by the state of Nebraska and the local city. So therefore, we're asking for item 77. We would put private clubs under the bottle club statutes. That way, they would have to still obtain a license, be recognized, and we could address any concerns or, or issues that may arise at those clubs. And that's, that's why we've asked for it.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Ames Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I would like, hopefully, that you would vote against this for the reason is, or not necessarily just vote against it, but perhaps move it, postpone it. And my reasoning for is, some may not look at this and understand, but when this law was interpreted here, as gentlemen here stated, we in North Omaha know that this is dog whistle. Because we know that there are certain individuals within our community who are trying, because they have determined that certain social clubs are not to their liking and not meeting their standards and agreeing. And I would ask, like I said, to have this held over and that perhaps city council member Johnson could get in touch more with, talk to council member Melton. Because we know that there's been conversation with, or we believe that there has been conversation with council member Melton on this specific issue regarding the fact that certain individuals within our district feel that certain social clubs should be closed down. And not only, or should be pulled under and restrained, because they're not doing what they feel should be done and operated in that manner. This is, as I said, it's a dog whistle when you say to bring the private clubs underneath the bottle club statutes, because we know what you want to do. And I'm just going to kind of throw back something that happened in the legislature that happened in Nebraska, when they put in term limits. The term limits were put into place for one person. They didn't stop to think out how that term limit would affect the whole system. And that's what we're asking here. Before you do this, talk and think, talk with not only those individuals that are speaking in your ear to do this, talk to other members and community members and those individuals of certain social clubs that are in particularly North Omaha. So when you hurt, and you stop, one, stop, think about the effect that you're going to have upon others, social clubs, that may be operating to the agreement of these others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other opponents today?
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is John Blyota. I currently reside at 3552 Pacific Street and Field Club. And I'm the national vice president of the Los Diablos Motorcycle Club. Many of you may not know this, but the Los Diablos Motorcycle Club is the oldest black and white motorcycle club in the world. It's also the oldest motorcycle club in the state of Nebraska, established in 1957 and officially chartered in 1960. We have a crossbreed of every race, religion, population that you can imagine. Our mother chapter is in North Omaha on, at 2501 Ames Avenue. Ms. Johnson, I want to thank you so much for representing that community. You're doing an amazing job, and you've done more in the short time that you've been here than your predecessor has in his career. Ms. Melton, I'd like to appeal to you to possibly rescind this motion or this bill. We at the Los Diablos rely on, on the little revenue that we receive to support many charities. Currently, we're supporting a, a dance group called, they just changed their name. They used to be LDC, they're now the New Legacy. And there are approximately 60 children, all from North Omaha. We've purchased for them a diesel school bus so that they can travel throughout the United States doing their dance competitions. We pay for their uniforms. We pay for their hotels and their meals. We also support a local basketball club in, in North Omaha. We have a history of benevolence. If anybody passes, our clubhouse is always available to them for a fundraiser if they don't have enough money to bury their kin. If there is a fire or any catastrophe, our clubhouse is always available to them. Now, as far as motorcycle clubs are concerned, you know, people get a bad reputation or watch Sons of Anarchy. Well, with Omaha Police Department, we have an open policy at our clubhouse. They don't, do not need a warrant. Anytime they want to enter, all they have to do is call myself or my boss, Danny, and we will come down and open the door and allow them in. It's only happened once. They called me. They wanted to come in. So I went down there, I opened the door for them, facilitated them with ladders to check the ceiling tiles, open the safes up in the clubhouse for them. And because we don't condone any, any use of narcotics, we don't even allow marijuana on the premises, no weapons, nothing. So we have nothing to hide. But this, this bill, with our, with our amazing legacy, would debilitate us. It would be, it would be terrible. Now, I'm also a cathedralite. I belong to Cathedral Parish. I've been a deaconate candidate. I'm a past grand knight of the Cathedral Knights of Columbus. I'm a past state director. One of the things that, are you going to categorize these fraternal benevolent societies as clubs because they have an address and they provide alcohol to the, to the priest appreciation dinners, the non-appreciation dinners, One Rose, One Life, all of these events throughout the city of Omaha? I don't know if the ramifications of this bill has, has really been thought out and thought through. And with that, I would like to thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Other opponents today?
Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue. Thanks, Ms. Johnson, for being our representative. Last time I was here, I was kind of in a hurry, but the community work that he was just speaking about, I want to be here as a testimony for that. And also, Councilman Rowe helped from the last time I was here. He seen what I was doing, and he helped donate some stuff, so appreciate that, too. But the, the clubs that you're talking about taxing or adding to the, for the liquor license, those clubs were the main ones supporting me during my whole 20-week initiative. I wasn't, I'm not a five of 13C. I'm one person with a family that's giving back to the community. Those clubs that you're talking about was the main ones. And so I came today because it concerns me anytime we start talking about privacy, that people want to start stepping on their toes. When do it stop? When do we have a privacy of, you know, being able to do what we want to do in our own place of business? And so I think at this point, it's just really none of their business or anybody's business, what a private club does, because that's the reason it was started as a private club. And so, yeah, I always liked coming up here after my sister right here, because she always delivered the truth, so.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none. Oh, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Danny Robinson. I reside at 5354 North 28th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I am also a member of the Los Diablos Motorcycle Club. I'm the national president. When I first read this, this bill, this law that you guys want to introduce, I thought in my mind, I said, you know, I don't go to bars. I'm a retired Marine, and the reason I don't go to bars is because they're public and they're violent. And so I'm a part of a motorcycle club where we can pretty much police ourselves and determine who can, cannot come in. And we don't sell alcohol. However, we do have people who do consume, and they can give a donation if they like. We might be open once, maybe twice per week, if that. So this bill would be devastating for us, as we are very charitable to our community. John just mentioned that we sponsor a basketball team, dance teams and whatnot. We also give money to St. Jude every year. We make runs for St. Jude, various charities. Right now, we're in the, in the process of trying to erect a building for homeless women and a pantry. We purchased a building, but we don't have the funds to put it up. So to introduce a bill like this would not only stagnate that process, but ultimately would shut us down. So I would ask you guys not introduce this bill and kill it, to show that there is some concern for North Omaha and for the positive things that we're trying to do there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. This question I had asked earlier during our pre-council, can you, for the record?
Jax Chalua, City Lobbyist.
Thank you. And can you also share with us how many social clubs exist in Omaha, Nebraska that sell liquor?
Okay.
I'm not sell liquor, but provides liquor.
Thank you for the question, council member. I, I put this forward to Omaha Police last evening, and they were kind enough to get back to me. The vice squad found out that in addition to Los Diablos, there's a Club Omaha, also another club they recognize called Forbidden Omaha, and a Hells Angels Club would fall under the category that we're talking about here. So, so to, at least the vice squad at this point in time, there's four that they're aware of. There may be more.
Okay. And so since we have four social clubs, why is so much attention being brought to changing the current legislative law?
Right. It's my understanding, and I'll let council member Melton speak for herself, but it's my understanding, we want to have this under the Bottle Club Act because there's certain private clubs that charge a membership fee, and they may not, you know, the, the members of the club may not bring their own bottles of liquor in, but the club itself may offer alcohol there for consumption, you know, and it may be gratuitous, or it may be a donation-based item. But nevertheless, the, the state of Nebraska and the city of Omaha has a public interest in knowing where liquor is dispensed. And that's been the, the, you know, interest of the state for a long time now.
Can you please define what's a long time? Because that could be a year, 10 years? Because again, why with four?
Right.
Entities, I'm trying to understand, wrap my head around, why this is so important at this time?
Well, council member, I can't give you an exact date, but once prohibition was repealed in the United States of America, regulation of alcohol came back online, if you will. So the state of Nebraska would have had these liquor control statutes since at least, I don't know my history well enough here, and I apologize for that, but I, I believe since 1930, in the 30s, something like that, 1930s, that's my guess.
So are you saying that the city of Omaha, since 1930, they've had a concern about social clubs needing to fall to the same practices as bars? And they've allowed, what, over 70-plus years to go around, to be in existence and do nothing about it for 70 years? And now, 70-plus, and now out of the blue, it's, it's an issue?
Well, it, it, I believe it came up before your subcommittee of the city council, do we call it the Liquor Committee now, or the Law Committee? So it came up, and this item was incubated there. The only time, you know, that the state and city would have an interest if, once again, alcohol is dispensed. If there's a private club meeting and not offering alcohol to their members or not serving it, then the city and the state would not have an interest in it. It's strictly because of the alcohol.
Okay. So this interest, again, is centered around alcohol?
Mm-hmm.
And the potential of some harm to citizens. But yet, when I'm hearing media plays about this harm for this social club in North Omaha, it is never the club, from what I'm seeing and hearing. It's never the club that these situations occur. They occurred at 24th then Ames. They occurred at other places nearby. And my question is, if someone did a lewd act in front of my home, and because I'm city council, does that make me the target? Does that make it so that there should be something put in place to deal with me simply because John and Henry was in front of my lawn and did something? Because that's going down a slippery slope association, and our constitutional right tells us that we should not be found guilty until we have an opportunity to appear in front of our judicial, judicial system, correct?
I understand. I'm trying to follow your example. I think the purpose of the law is, is simply to give, give permission for someone to operate. It's, it's not to call into question necessarily, you know, what activities go on there unless they fall outside of the law. So it's just my understanding that we'd, we'd like to have these clubs that operate and serve alcohol fall under the bottle club.
For the past month, I think it needs to be noted on the record here, that for the past month, I have done surveillance in that area. And I've seen what's happening at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And I've seen young people in their cars parked in the surrounding areas of this club. They have not entered the club. The police has been there. Taxpayers' money are being used to babysit the club. There is signs all around the club that says no parking except for in front of the club. I mean, it just gives this appearance that perhaps the social club is being targeted. That's the outward appearance. And given the fact that we only have four social clubs, and this has been, this concern that the city has, has been a concern for over 70 years. and this has been, this concern that the city has, has been a concern for over 70 years. Again, my concern is, is this club being targeted? My additional concern is, are we applying the, is this the real problem here? Which I believe is poverty is the real problem here. We have North Omaha. We have very little opportunities for youth to socialize in other spaces other than 24th Thane Ames or nearby. Whereas other parts of the city of Omaha, youth are able to socialize in a number of places. So as good citizens, should we be concerned about providing more resources for young folks in North Omaha, District 2, to have the same opportunities to hang out like others? Should that be available? That's the root problem here, is having opportunities in North Omaha for young to hang out. I don't believe this social club has any responsibility for youth that are hanging out. Then if we also, my other matter, our concern that I have is that if the police is there, and the youth are there, and they're not going into the club, then should they be ticketing the youth outside of the club to persuade them to go other places? Why should the club be penalized, because that's what it looks like? Should the club be penalized for the activities of the youth? And why should the youth be penalized for the activities of the adults whom are not providing a place for them to socialize?
I understand your points, Councilmember, and I sympathize. Whether the council's in favor of the merits of the resolution, that's up to you. And also, I can't speak for law enforcement in terms of why they patrol and don't patrol. Sometimes they do come up based on calls, is all I know. And so this has come as a result of your subcommittee, and so therefore it's before you today.
Well, I think that this is something that I have started working with the social club in the BID. I think that we need to sit down and talk about some other alternatives rather than burdening the city with changing of law to address one club, because that's what it looks like. I haven't seen any evidence to suggest otherwise when we only have four social clubs. If I can, if someone can provide me some data regarding the other three social clubs, and if they're having the same issues, concerns, then I guess I would, I could see that. But right now, I don't see any of that. So, you know, I'm going to make a motion that this be held over for further investigation and further answers to be given, because right now, it looks like this social club is being targeted.
So that's a motion to lay over for two weeks, I guess that would be?
Yes.
No meeting next week?
Yes.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I mean, I just, so I just wanted to give my take, so, because it sounds like there's, I guess I don't really understand why alcohol needs to be served between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. And if a social club can't serve alcohol, apparently for free or from donation, they're going to shut down if they can't serve alcohol between 2:00 a.m. and whenever, or 24 hours a day. Because that's the only issue that we have, is we have private clubs. And by the way, Club Omaha said the same thing, you're just targeting us. We went through years of Club Omaha. Where the owner accused this, everyone on this council of targeting him, and that wasn't the case. There were multiple, there were multiple clubs, which we call bottle clubs, all over the state, that were having some of the similar issues. So in this particular case, all we're asking is that if you're going to serve alcohol to your patrons that you have, in a business, that you're a business and you're serving alcohol, then you should have a liquor license, just like every other business that serves alcohol. If I have, and in fact, when I was chairing my fundraiser for St. Roberts years ago, I paid my 100, I forget, $100, $120, whatever it was, to get my liquor license for that night for the fundraiser, so that we could serve alcohol for the fundraiser at the church. So I'm just saying that this should fall under the liquor license for the purpose of not serving alcohol after 2:00 a.m., and I don't see how that's going to deprive the youth. And I don't want my son to have the opportunity to hang out in any part of the city, actually, after 2:00 a.m. and have the ability to get alcohol. So I mean, I don't care where you live. I hope that kids aren't out after 2:00 getting alcohol at some of these clubs, because I don't think that's the opportunity we should be giving our youth. And I also think that the fact that taxpayers are having to babysit the club, as you said, Ms. Johnson, is a problem for the police. Because what's happening is, when the bars close down at 2:00 a.m., people are going to these clubs, and we've had other clubs. There was a club in Vinnie's district as well, but it has closed down. It was years ago. And it was a problem as well. And I'm glad to see that that, I don't want any of these clubs to close down. I would just rather see people not go to the clubs for free or alcohol by donation at 2:00 a.m. when all the bars close, and then we still have problems at 3:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. from people leaving there. So that's why we have liquor licenses, and that's why we have a time, just no more alcohol after 2:00. So that's all I'm asking for. And yes, the problem did come up because a local business owner in the BID on 24th Street came to me as Chair of the Law Committee, and we deal with the liquor licenses. And typically, when we, what I want to let you know, when we have problems with bars, which we do, we have, there have been issues with bars. What we do is we call the owners into the Law Committee, and we don't want to shut them down. Our goal isn't to ever shut anybody down. Don't want to shut you down. In fact, didn't want to shut Club Omaha down. Just wanted them to follow the same rules that all the other businesses do for the safety of the people around them. And so what happened is, well, can you call you guys up in front of the Liquor Committee? And actually, I can't, because you're not under the liquor laws. And so what we do, though, with bar owners is typically, we will call the bar owners in, and then we ask to work with them. You know, here are the issues that the neighbors are having. Here are things that people are complaining about, or maybe we have some tavern reports. And typically, we'll make suggestions on, you know, maybe you should hire some security. It would probably benefit you. Or sometimes it's noise, and we're making suggestions. And we've worked with a number of bars over the last eight years that I've been on council in doing that. But we don't have that opportunity with the bottle clubs. So literally, all I'm asking for is that if you serve alcohol in a business, because if people bring their own alcohol into your clubs, you have to get, you have to get a liquor license. So if people bring their alcohol in, that's what we did, that's what happened with the bottle club. And by the way, this isn't a city law, and what today is, is a legislative package. So if this comes in front of the legislature, it just says that the city council approves it or supports it. So there's no laws being passed today. We can't pass this law. The city can't pass this law. It's just supporting, basically, that you have to have a liquor license if you're a business. And that, that's it. It applies, and it's clubs all over. It's not one particular club, because they pop up, and we've had one pop up and close down, and I'm sure there are probably more. Is there, is there a business owner from the BID that would like to say anything? I'm going to invite you to come down, since I have the mic.
Thank you, Councilwoman Melton. Levanya Goodwin, several properties in the area. The property 3116 North 24 Streets, most memorable to people. Board President of the North 24th Street Business Improvement District. We originally brought this issue to, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Melton, the Law Committee, after working with not only neighbors in the area, but also the club itself, asking them simply to be a good neighbor. Not only do I have tenants in the area, but also work with Janesia Jones, who has lived across the street from the club for 50 years. Now, she has said to me that for many years, they were a great neighbor. And, but within the last few years is when the nuisance behavior began. We have video upwards, dozens upon dozens, that show after-hours nuisance behavior, everything from defecating in yards. I've been in cleanups where we've picked up heroin needles, bottles, you know, fights break out. And honestly, prior to working with OPD with the closed property signs there, they said they would not break up the fights. So literally, you've got citizens being beat down. 30, 40 people gathered, and the police were like, hey, two cops? We can't handle that. So we went to Los Diablos, had a meeting, I believe it was mid-August, and said, hey, can you be a good neighbor? That's all we're asking, not trying to shut you down. But by the way, they are not a business, okay? By definitions of a business, they don't employ anyone. But the goal of the BID is not to shut businesses down. After seeing through OPD, 600-plus 911 calls within a three-block radius focused on Los Diablos, we said, what can we do other than approach the Law Committee to get around this loophole? Because I'm not a lawyer, and I don't work for OPD, but it seems like if I wanted to raise pure D hell in a community, I'd just become a social club, because there's a loophole that exists.
And that is correct. And now, I want to let you know that all this is, is asking or requiring that they get a liquor license. So I don't know that that's necessarily going to solve your problems. It's just that there can't be any drinking after 2:00 a.m.
Yes, and most of the, so.
Between 2:00 and 6:00.
And to be clear, we understand that. What we noticed during COVID is when this club was shut down, it did not draw the crowds. Not to mention when they shut down the week during Native Omaha days, we thought we're on a good path because they were working with us. There was no draw for the nuisance behavior that happens between 2:30 and 6:00 a.m. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, almost every single weekend. And again, I actually just happened to drop off a turnback text today, so I don't, I'm not prepared to show video, although I could on my phone. I think you've seen it. These aren't trumped-up charges. We're not, we initially asked them to be a good neighbor. And just to compare how these conversations can mitigate issues, we went to Jesse's with the same letter. Prior to their fire, they shut down at midnight, and it really helped to mitigate the nuisance behavior and the crowds that were gathering North 24th Street. In particular, one of the last homicides that happened on the front footage of North 24th Street, which was Jasmine Harris, July 4th of this year, who was gunned down in the middle of gang violence. So we're not simply focusing on one entity. We're really trying to work out a problem in our neighborhood. We don't want to see families like Ms. Jones leave. What if people like Ms. Jones, who you could set her house in any community in this city? Matter of fact, on a good day, you'll still see her raking leaves at 92 years old. This woman, because her family worked with the government, had a salute at the White House when she was 75 years old. If we can't stand up for people like that in our community, and if people like that don't, of that caliber, of that creed, of that honor, want to leave our neighborhoods, what do we have left?
I want to, I want to thank you for taking the time to come down, and I appreciate that, because I, you know, obviously, when I spoke to you, that's when I, I actually thought they needed a liquor license. And it very well may be that the law as it currently sits, they may need a liquor license, but in my opinion, maybe clarifying the law may be needed. And so that's what I think is, I hope everybody stays open. I hope everybody gets along. I hope that if by closing at 2:00, or at least no more alcohol after 2:00, that maybe it will help. But my, and again, my goal isn't to close down anybody. I just want, hopefully, to provide some kind of control when you're dealing with liquor, because when people consume that much liquor, and they're continuing to consume it after 2:00 a.m., then they tend to not make as good of decisions. So, and that may be what you're seeing in the BID, so.
To be clear, again, we went to Los Diablos. I believe the gentleman we spoke to is behind me. We asked them if they'd close at 2:00, and they said, no one can tell us when to close. So we went to the table, trying to mitigate this issue as community members, and that was their response. The BID does represent 240 property owners in the area, so I don't stand here alone. And our goal really is to see the vibrance of the community come back. But when you've got an issue of lawlessness, okay, then that's not going to happen. Not to mention, we also want equitable policing. So, you know, if targeting policing is there, because community members have called over 600 times for this particular area since 2019, this isn't overpolicing, to be clear. This is a response to what the people who live in the area have requested. And I quote Nina Keaton in saying, and she's Mrs. Jones's daughter, that she's living a living nightmare. No one in Omaha, Nebraska, north, south Omaha, Millard, should have to live a living nightmare because an entity refuses to be a good neighbor.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming down today, and I just wanted to kind of clarify what this, what this was. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so I just wanted, just to be clear, it doesn't about closing anybody down. It's just making everybody follow the same rules all over the city. If you have a bar, or you have a club, and you have alcohol, have a liquor license. So it's as simple, just as simple as that, and then you just follow the same rules.
Only if the Councilmember calls you up. Are you finished, Ms. Melton?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to finalize. And I would like, in all honesty, this is legislate, this is just our legislative package. If the council doesn't support it, vote it down. If you do support it, vote it up. I mean, I put it on here for that reason, for the people that live around these clubs, and we heard from one today. So it's not targeting. It's literally just wanting things to be fair. But I don't know that continuing it is going to do anything. Let's just either give Jack our package, or don't give him our package. And if the city council doesn't, if this city, just to let you know, if any of us don't support any one of these legislative measures, it actually doesn't really matter. We can still go down and find a senator. Any, any one of us can go down, find a senator to carry it, and it can get passed in the legislature. So our, our vote is just basically whether or not Jack, we're giving Jack the direction to go fight for it and find the senator for us. Otherwise, we can do it on our own, and I'm fairly certain that, you know, we can do that with some of the issues that are going on. So I just, in my opinion, we should give Jack his marching orders today, either up or down on each one of these. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's some further lights. Mr. Perlmutter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Melton, you're exactly right. At the end, this is just a package that our city lobbyist is going to find a senator to either advance in this short session or not. But that's a question I have for you, Mr. Chaloha. Do you, do you have anybody? Do you have a state senator that's willing to work on this?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. At this point in time, I haven't asked any senator to carry it yet. I'm waiting to see the vote from the council today. We are working, though, in harmony with the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to try to come up with language, at least, to figure out what a bill would look like, and we've started that process.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Because keep in mind, regardless of how this vote is today, and I apologize for you people that are here today, we're not the judge and jury. This isn't the Board of Eake. We're either gonna, you know, be in favor to have Jack go down and work some magic in Lincoln, or we're not, right? We've got a lot of things that we want every year, and we just don't get them. I will say, it's not real fair to single you out, especially here, and there's only four that fall within this category of what we're trying to work with. But Councilmember Melton's right about that as well. But Councilmember Melton's right about that as well. We don't have as much leverage if a problem arises from a place that doesn't have a liquor license. And keep in mind, say, somebody down in Lincoln takes this, they run with it, you're not able, you're not able to stay open. It doesn't solve the problem along North 24th Street. Somebody else can come in and apply for a liquor license, and now they have problems all the time. So I guess what it is, is for us to decide, do we want Jack to do something with us or not? But what I do want to do is have the gentleman, because I do have a couple of questions. Yeah, you, sir. Sorry, I don't remember your name. Come on down. And just give your name and address again, if you would, please.
My name is John Blayota, and I reside at 3552 Pacific Street and Field Club.
Okay. Nope, here's how it's going to work. I'm going to ask you some questions, and you're going to answer them. Thank you. Otherwise, we're going to be here all day. I will give you some time to say something at the end, though. So you, being the leader of the club, I am going to say, it's not fair that somebody came up on the public record and said there were 600 police calls, because it doesn't apply to just you.
Right, well, if that was a lie-
I'm going to have you sit down.
Okay.
Trying to help you out, but if you're not going to help me out, I'm going to have you sit down. So I sat in the meeting, where I was given the information that we asked for police calls in the area, and it was about 600. I think it was actually more. But, and it wouldn't be fair to ask Chief over there, because he's probably here on a different matter, but there's no way to determine that the 600 calls were directly related to your place.
Well, Mrs. Johnson has that information.
Okay, well, she can ask you then. I'm just telling you, it's not fair for somebody to come up here and say that against you-
Right.
-when there's no way to say they were directly related. And this I know. So I want to make that clear, because that was said on the record. And it almost sounded like there were 600 complaints towards you. And I promise, if we had 600 complaints against your club-
Yes.
-we'll find a different way to close you down.
Right.
Whether it's good neighbor, or CO violation, or maybe you got a plumbing issue that the planning director would love to go find out about. So there's different ways. Councilmember Melton's not, not, not wrong on both ends about why we're here. But I will tell you, before being on the council, I worked for the gas company, MUD. Short story, nobody wants to hear it right at 5:00 o'clock, but it's going to, it's going to tell you where I'm going and why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote today. I only chose to work east of 42nd and north and south Omaha. So I had places in south Omaha that I know I could go to be safe. And I had places in north Omaha that I, I know I could be safe for over 17 years. And yours was actually one of them. I just, I, trust me, there's problems in high-poverty areas all across the city. And we're all trying to work to, to fix the problems. But there's certain places you know where you are going to be safe for whatever reasons. And you were one of them, so. That's why, not to cut you off, but that's why I'm going to support Councilmember Johnson on denying this. Now, again, not denying this, but not voting in favor to have Jack go to Lincoln with it. But again, it doesn't mean that a state senator isn't going to work it. And at that point, it's kind of out of our hands. But it does help if you have a 7-0 vote for him to take, because then a senator's going to look at this and say, hey, this is an easy one. I got the City of Omaha's support, that's who we want to be behind. But if something goes up there, and there's a few people, especially the council member that represents that district that's against it, they might find something else to work with in a short session, so. With that being said, do you want to add anything quickly? Please.
I thank you for your commentary. And our, our clubhouse is probably the safest place in Omaha. The, I spoke to Councilwoman Johnson, and she heard the same thing about the 600 calls. And I'd like to confirm this on record. There were less than 200 when you actually got the transcripts, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when, I'm not going to sit here and tell someone that they're, call someone a liar. If I don't have proof they're lying, that woman was lying. And she was lying about more than that.
Well, let's just, let's just go this direction with it. There was something that was brought up about, how long have you been the, are you the president of the club?
The national vice president.
How, how long have you been part of this club?
Close to a decade.
Close to a decade. Because it seems like there was a comment from a previous speaker that said, well, we didn't used to have these problems, but now we do now. Has there been a change in the club or the leadership?
No, I, I agree wholeheartedly that there is a problem. There is no doubt about it. And we're working in collaboration with the police to resolve the problem. But we are not the problem. The people, the youth that are congregating, as Congresswoman, as, I'm sorry, legislator Johnson-
One of them, one of them, council member.
Right, council member. There are not a lot of youth programs in north Omaha as there are in other areas in Omaha, right? So the youth gather where there are people. Unfortunately, they gather at our location on occasion, and we try to dissuade them from being there. We try to tell them to go somewhere else. The police do the same, but they're not our patrons, they're not our guests, right? They're, they're not our members, they're not welcomed by us. So we are suffering from the same problem. Now, as far as like defecating and these needles and things of that nature, that's never, that's not even remotely true. That's a lie.
Well, um-
No comments from the audience, no comments from the audience, please. Just, just address the council.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, don't, yeah. Like, we can't have outbursts. It's kind of a Q and A. Again, I'm trying to get out of that judge and jury against your club. It's not designed or being brought before us just for your club, obviously. Sounds like you're 1 of 4, so I guess you could take it as 25%. I want to thank you-
Thank you.
-for what you do in the community. We don't have enough people that help, especially inner-city kids and groups and programs. So thanks for doing that regardless of how this works today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't tell if there's a further light on right now. Ms. Johnson, is your light on?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. There is a discrepancy in the number of 600 reports that was reported regarding the incidents in the three-year period. I did get some information from the Police Department that showed the discrepancy. But again, I want to put things in perspective here, which is, this club is not providing alcohol to youth that are outside of the club. They're outside of the club. I believe the real issue here is there is no other place for the kids to hang out. Unfortunately, in other sections of Omaha, Nebraska, there are places for youth to hang out. So should we be concerned about that? I believe we should. At least I'm concerned about that, since that is my district. I would also, at this time, like to ask Ms. Weston to come up and share some additional thoughts on this as well. Thank you.
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. And I know that you've been working with this, and that was, as I said before. And Councilwoman Melton, we do understand that what this is, is a package, a legislative package. We do understand that. We also understand that you could go down and get a, one of those senators. We don't feel that way, that it's going to happen, but we, we understand that. And I also like to say that the club is not the problem. And as I stated before, you only, well, confirm, you only had four clubs that this is going to affect, except that when you do this for, in north Omaha, you're doing it, and it's going to affect a lot more people. It's not going to affect just that club. That club is not the problem. It is others around it, and they are creating the problems for the club. And so I would hope that you would not send this down, because there's a lot of other things that Jack could be working on and this council could be supporting. This is an issue that it is targeting, and as I said, it's a dog whistle that you're trying to target one business that is doing, providing a service for their members, providing a service for the community, and they're not trying to encourage the youth to come in and do this. There's not a need. Let's try to work more together. And I'm sorry if this lady who is 75 years old, or has lived in that house for 50, but don't put it on the backs of the club. And those individuals that were there, are they members of the club? Or are they members of just the society? There's no need to regulate this purpose for a private club. And there are private clubs that are not on north Omaha that are existing. Are they going to have to follow underneath this rule? And are you that going to be enforced? We've heard that before, I'm sorry. I know you're shaking your head, and you're saying yes. But we don't feel that way, and we're hoping that you will not send this down as a package at this time. And as I said, why can't you take and work together and work with Ms. Goodwin? The BID is to take and see if we can't resolve this. Let's get community members in and work with you councilmembers and Ms. Goodwin to be able to find a more reasonable solution. And let's stop, not target, an individual club that's trying to do good. And they do do a lot of good. They do more good in our community than they do bad. They just get a bad rap. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, for bringing this up and your continued work with this.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. And then we're going to have to cut this off.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, Lavanya Goodwin, 3116 North 24th Street. We work with OPD for the data, and so to be called a liar is just, you know, uncalled for when I believe that this, the Law Committee saw the records provided by OPD, not by me. We had tenants, I have tenants in that area. I've owned the, I've owned a building in that area with property for 15 years. So I didn't just decide to pick on Los Diablos one day, until we had a tenant move in who literally moved because they could not sleep at night, and then corroborated that night after night on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they could not sleep because of the draw. If in fact, we can actually look at the evidence or the data, sit down with the Law Committee, Councilwoman Johnson and Los Diablos to mitigate this issue. Now, I'm not saying this package should not go forward. The goal is to solve the problem. The goal is not to close down a club. The goal is not to make it, you know, impossible for people to go and have a good time. But when I tell you that Ms. Nina Keaton, and I find it interesting that myself, Ms. Keaton, no one was aware, I just happened to turn down, turn, turn in a turnback tax grant, and I just happened to see what council was going on. So no one that could corroborate the other side of the story was there. I will tell you, Councilwoman Palermo, you may have worked for MUD 18 years ago. Everyone can change. What this club has attracted and how they manage what's happening outside of their club has changed. We would have no reason as a BID not to want good neighbors, residents, businesses, social clubs, organizations to operate in this community. I also want this council to take into consideration what a BID can do. It can help uplift an impoverished area, a disinvested area. Also want you to take into account where the testimony and the data has come from, from people within the area, not simply black or brown faces that may, maybe have a few things to say about this particular area from Meredith to Coming, from 25th to 20th Street. Now, the, the Law Committee has a USB flash drive full of photos and video supporting what I said today. So we're not surmising, we're not lying. We would have no reason to come up here and to defame someone's character as the VP of Los Diablos did to me today. The goal is not to shut anyone down. How we mitigate this, I hope this council will assist the North 24th Street BID in its work to provide a safe and secure area for all its residents and businesses.
Something? I would volunteer so that we can just get this, move on with our legislative package. And I've done this before, but I will volunteer to meet with you, the club, and mediate this. Let's all get together sometime, and let's all sit down and have a conversation. Because I don't know that continuing this back and forth is actually doing anybody any good. And I think everybody in the room wants what's best for that area. So I would, I would love to assist and be a part of maybe coming, doing a mediation and seeing what we can resolve on our own without the need for anything. I still think clubs should probably be under the liquor license, but that's, I don't necessarily think that's the answer, and I don't think it's necessarily going to solve all of the problems. So maybe we could just agree to do that. I'd be more than happy.
There was a motion for a two-week layover on the floor.
Are you finished? Lavanya, I just want to clarify that there is a discrepancy regarding the data that was collected regarding the number of calls. The information that you got that stated that there were 600 calls was looked, the, the area that was examined was a wider scope than more focused to that area. So that's why there is a discrepancy. But I did get information when asked for specifically around the social club, and that's when the number went smaller.
Right.
So I don't believe, I just want to clarify, so that there is no misunderstanding. I don't believe that this gentleman was deliberately-
He deliberately called you a liar?
Saying that, he's just saying that I got some different information from the Police Department when they looked at it again. There is a motion, so thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. And I would like to say thank you, Ms. Johnson, for the opportunity. Again, the goal is to mitigate the issue that I don't think, I think everyone can agree to that. I do think that the fact that I stumbled upon this conversation, and it's moving forward, is a relief that something is actually doing, being done to mitigate an issue in the area. So thank you. I would agree to that conversation, and yet, there is a loophole with bottle clubs that I think this council needs to consider, because we want our community safe and secure first, before we can have economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. And so there is a motion on the floor.
I'm going to second it.
Okay.
Unless you just want to throw it out, I think it's settled.
Well, my, my original motion was to delay this, which would give District 2 the opportunity to work District 2 problems out with District 2, because that's where this problem resides.
I seconded it. All right, so your motion stands for a two-week delay?
Uh huh.
And there's a second? No further lights? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton? Palermo? Rowe? Bagley?
Aye.
Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, 4 to 3. Item 78, a resolution to request a bill be introduced to seek state appropriation to help the city obtain a federal lead paint abatement grant.
Public hearing and vote on number 78 is today. Proponents, please.
Jack Chalow, a city lobbyist. Item 78 would seek an appropriation bill to ask the state of Nebraska to partner with the City of Omaha as we seek a federal housing and urban development grant to help us continue with our lead paint abatement program within Omaha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today on number 78?
I know it's a shock, as a proponent, but Cheryl Weston, 1811 Emmett Street. Yes, I would definitely support, and I hope that you- Yes, I would definitely support, and I hope that you, as the council member, will support this. Having worked with the EPA in getting the Superfund passed years ago, there still is a need for lead work in old housing and so forth. So hopefully that, yes, please send him and Jack, do all you can to get it. We need the money because we still have homes and we still have properties that need to be taken care of because our kids are suffering. And particularly in Northeast Omaha and South Omaha area, we need all the help and all the money that we can get. And I thank you for even doing this and going after, as I said. It's not over yet, and we need help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Louis C. Magnus, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. I'm on a rush, so I just want to be short because I do support sending the lobbyist to the legislator, notwithstanding the unicameral. So I'm supporting this item as a legislative package. I'm also supporting this item for Jack to be your lobbyist once more. On a side note, I think it was a mistake to have the lobbyist work for the city, I mean, the executive, the mayor. I think if you're going to do that, the council should have a lobbyist and the mayor should have a lobbyist. But now there may be, you can get some money for another administrative position. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents on 78? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Is there a motion?
I'm moving for a second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 78 is approved, seven to zero. Item 79, a resolution to request a bill be introduced to help combat catalytic converter thefts.
Public hearing and vote on number 79 is today. Proponents, please.
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. The Omaha Police Department report that we've had an ever-increasing number of catalytic converter thefts in the city of Omaha, and therefore, we're working on a one-two punch solution. We'll look at our city ordinances relative to salvage yards and precious metals. Likewise, in order to keep the culprits from going to other communities to try to sell or pawn these items, we would ask the state to undertake a law that would also make it more difficult. So we would support item 79.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Jack, when we had our pre-council this morning, I appreciate, first, Chief Schmodder's recognition of the issues that certainly beyond my district are going on with the theft of these catalytic converters. I think it's great that you're trying to address this at the state level, and I know when we snuck across the street to get lunch, you're working all the time, and I saw you getting a sandwich, and we got to chat a little more about it, and that at least you'll try to make the connection to the state of Iowa to see, I got to believe that catalytic converter theft doesn't stop at the Missouri River. So if there's something going on in Iowa, if they're trying to address this on their side, so if Nebraska passes a state law that somehow Carter Lake, that's, everybody knows that little sliver of Iowa that's just north of downtown Omaha, where there's a salvage yard there, then maybe that can be rectified on the east side of the Missouri River as well. So I appreciate your efforts on this because this is a problem that needs to be addressed, and as Chief Schmodder has given us the marching orders to you and the councils, we vote on this today, I think it'll be a welcome avenue for us, at least for District Three and beyond that. So thanks.
Great, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just kind of quickly, Jack, I was going to say, I hope we can utilize, as we talked about at pre-council, maybe there's some opportunity to use Leads Online to enforce this now and understand, and will be supportive of this, to have this taken up in the legislature for statewide as well, too. But I would encourage maybe you and the Law Department and the Police Department to see if there's something we can do to use that existing ordinance to help alleviate some of these issues, at least as it relates to those in Omaha.
Thank you, council member. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Thanks, and I'll also be supportive of this today, too. I think, I would think we probably all will, and I think that's right. We should pursue a local and a state issue on this to address what has become a really serious problem. And it does actually still, it is actually covered under our property crime ordinances and our Leads Online ordinances as it applies to operations of pawn and salvage. It's just that this particular item is very difficult to address in that context, given that it's usually sold in pieces, that it's almost never identified, but does have a precious metals component. So while that is a direction we could look to tighten up, and I do have a conversation with the pawn and salvage unit to that effect, it does strike me that the issue is bigger and might require either an addition to or a larger solution, which could include things like prohibiting the sale of a catalytic converter without its total housing. They're usually broken apart and sold that way. Or having, only allowing those to sell them, that might be a vehicle sales operation, a used vehicle sale operation, or maybe a licensed recycler. That also kind of gets to that issue. Or as we found in Lincoln in our conversation last week, they actually have adopted a local ordinance that requires a permit to sell them. I'm not sure how effective that will be. They don't know yet. It's still quite early on, but it still doesn't get to that jurisdictional issue that we've all observed that does seem to require a state approach. So that's why I think it's wise to move forward with this particular item today as well. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 79 is approved, seven to zero. Item 80, a resolution to request a bill be introduced to allow licensed mental health professionals to place a person into emergency protective custody in certain situations.
Public hearing and vote on number 80 is today. Proponents, please.
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. Item 80, as explained, deals with emergency protective custody. Just as way of background for the council, right now, under state law, only a sworn peace officer can have somebody committed to emergency protective custody. And the parameters of that are typically whether that person's a danger to themselves or a danger to the community. With that, and with the increased attention to mental health and mental health wellness, the police are asking for assistance and help here, where we think it would be amendable to allow licensed professionals also to have that ability, and that would take off maybe some of the pressure that our peace officers face now.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 80?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I think it's a great deal, a great resolution, because anything that can help the situation that we have in the mental health. I think it, also, I agree that it would help to have a mental professional, mental health individual perhaps be along when the police is called, because they're not always trained to be able to help the mental health situation. But if they have a mental health professional with them that would be able to do that, I think would be great, and I, hopefully, that you will pass this and send it down and find a senator. Jack, we'll be able to find somebody to move this along, because we have a major mental health problem in our area. So I think this is great, and hopefully, again, you'll pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion, a second. I'll just add that I did propose this to our legislative agenda several years ago. I do think it's a good idea for those same reasons. I think it also is a good timing in terms of our approach now with the Police Department and our Behavioral Health Support Unit, and how it can enhance their efforts, too, to deescalate situations that we've seen throughout the city and help families and mental health professionals deal with that better, too. There's a motion, a second. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Aye.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Item 80 is approved, seven to zero. Item 84, a resolution to support legislation, if introduced, to mandate better notice from wireless companies when they want to locate their facilities in the city right away.
Public hearing and vote on number 84 is today. Proponents?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. This resolution would help the city of Omaha in the sense that we would try to be more responsive to our constituents, the people and the citizens of Omaha. Anytime a cell tower or antenna might be located within the city's right of way, the city has the duty and burden to take care of the right of way and look out for it. However, under state law, we only have limited authority when it comes to wireless services, and we have to be, you know, under federal law and state law, very accommodating and with the need to get these communications out there and to serve the citizens as well. What we're asking for here is that when a tower would be located, they would reach out and specifically give notice to the neighbors before an antenna is placed in the right of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Matthew Riddick, 5143 Erskine Street. First, I want to thank you, Councilman Festerson, and you, Councilman Bagley, for spearheading the monopole notification efforts and for your correspondence and communication with me over the past several weeks. I just wanted to take the opportunity today to reiterate kind of what we've discussed through email for the benefit of the other council members, and especially the ones who maybe yet haven't had to deal with this in their neighborhoods yet. I'm fully in favor of a city ordinance, the one that you'll be introducing in a couple of weeks, requiring notification of adjacent property owners when monopole permits are received. I would hope that the language of the ordinance will allow notifications to come not only from the utility but also from the city. And I would suggest, council members, that maybe you talk to planning and perhaps request that you be notified directly anytime monopole permits are received in your district, so that you have the opportunity to reach out to the homeowners that will be directly affected by this. And I'll add that beyond that, I hope that the state legislature and city council can work together and build upon the notification requirement to include other small cell wireless provisions similar to those that exist in other municipalities across the country. Ultimately, it'd be great if the city and adjacent property owners could have the opportunity to discuss and, if necessary, modify the final location and appearance of a monopole prior to any permits being issued to avoid some of the problems that have occurred with some of the other poles that have gone up around town. Any guidelines or regulations or ordinances enacted by the state or the city should be applied equally to all planned monopole locations, not just facilities in historic districts. And some of the guidelines governing monopoles in other municipalities include, they should be located to meet ADA requirements. They should not obstruct or hinder pedestrians or interfere with signal lights, signage, streetlights, street furniture like benches, fire hydrants, or business district maintenance. They should be co-located or installed in the same location as existing utility poles whenever possible, and alternate locations should require justification and approval. They should match the look of existing streetlights and street furniture in the neighborhood, and the appearance of monopoles should be included with the application submittal. They should not create a new obstruction to property sightlines, and they should not create noise exceeding some minimal limit above the ambient sound. Again, I just wanted to thank you for your efforts and your continued communication.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, and thanks for sticking around today. Any other proponents today on number 84?
Hi, Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd Street. Thank you also for the walk with us, Mode Shift Omaha. Not speaking on behalf of Mode Shift Omaha, but when the 55th and Poppleton situation came up, we invited Councilor Bagley, and he showed up. So thank you. Saw it firsthand. We're happy to also speak with Senator Kavanaugh, who I believe is excited to be on board with this when it goes to the state. But I think I just really would like to reiterate, I know you can't answer questions, but when it goes to the state or whoever's talking about this, how does anything trump ADA? Like, I don't understand how it was okay for a sidewalk to just be completely destroyed with no timeline. Communication with the homeowner is great, but I would really like to reiterate the fact that being mindful of ADA, American Disabilities Act, that's not just a suggestion, that's a requirement. And the fact that it was completely just not taken into consideration is ridiculous. So I think, yes, it's good that we're having communication with homeowners, but also ADA requirements ahead of time before the permit is even granted, as well as a timeline is crucial. So just speaking at it from a mobility equity standpoint, sidewalks are travel lanes, and that's something that I'll continue to harp on later. But for now, yes, communication is good, but ADA and timeline is, I think, also crucial at both the city and state level if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Hello, Scott Blake, 2316 North 52nd Street. So I made this map. This is something I made a while ago. If it's on the thing. Hey, there we go. So, yeah, back when the 55th and Poppleton pole was put in that person's sidewalk, I found, I went to omahapermits.com and found all of the permits that have been pulled for small cell, you have to sift through the data, but I found 460 monopole permits. I then made this fancy map, and I even broke it down into districts. I tagged a couple of you on Twitter that use Twitter. And then I went a step further, and I actually contacted the homeowners that had no idea a pole was about to be installed in their front yard. I just think it's pretty crazy that a citizen with limited resources can do a job that you guys are planning on sending to the state, maybe they'll work on in the legislature. And I know Festerson has an ordinance coming up on December 7th. But here, I've already done it. The tools are available. So if you want some help on how to use omahapermits.com, I'm happy to share. It's a pretty easy tool, and I'll see you December 7th.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this item here, I was a month on the council, and I got a text message, and I saved the text. It was 7:48 PM on June 30th, saying that there was a pole going to be installed in the middle of a sidewalk, and I was a little suspect of it, so I jotted over there, and lo and behold, it was true. So I did the best things I could. I talked to my colleagues. I talked to the state senator, John Kavanaugh, and we, I also got ahold immediately, Jen Bauer, the Neighborhood Association president. And I didn't have any answers how to solve this, other than I thought of the great Mel Gibson in Lethal Weapon 2, to put a chain on the bumper and rip the pole out of the sidewalk, but calmer things and heads prevailed. So going through the legislative process with Senator Kavanaugh, who's looking at it, and Jack, I'm sure you'll be talking to him down in Lincoln, and other senators, and I appreciate President Festerson's help on this, as I was already on the council, and giving me the guidance we needed to do with the ordinance, and Jennifer Taylor in the Law Department's done a good job of helping us. It's a slow process, but as I learn in this, and Sarah mentioned that meeting we had a couple months after I first got notified of this, when we took the walk in the neighborhood, and it was good for the neighbors to see, and I can try to explain at that point where I was at on this, talking to the bodies that I just mentioned, and also going forward on this is the hurdles we face at the federal level, and over half the states, I forget what number it is, already have these laws in the books. It passed here in 2019 with 44 yes, five abstain, signed by the governor, and the unattended consequence is 55th and Poppleton. President Festerson had, after he helped me on this already on, it's not isolated to District Three, he has one up in Dundee, and the rest of us do as well. So we'll continue working on this, and it's a slow process, but when I get asked about it, people wanted to know where it's at. It takes time, but we're trying to address, and I'm confident through the city and also through the state that Jack's going to be working with, we can try to get some progress on that. So again, I appreciate President Festerson's help on this throughout the process, and Jack, I know you're going to charge your help pretty good on this one for us, so thanks.
Thank you. I agree, and I thank my cosponsor, Councilman Bagley, for working on this. I mean, terrible examples, both on Poppleton and the sidewalk area, and then one that occurred shortly thereafter in a historic neighborhood business district. occurred shortly thereafter in a historic neighborhood business district with no warning right outside a landmark building. And we did engage the companies, by the way, in those conversations to no avail, so here we are. And that's why we're taking action, both hopefully at the local level and the state level. And we do have Jennifer Taylor here. I want to prolong this today, so maybe I won't call you down unless there's questions, but suffice it to say, we intend to introduce an ordinance, we hope, on December seventh for a three-week process before the end of the year. That does at least require some basic public notice of property owners prior to permits being issued. And we hope that a state law could, at minimum, do that, but we're hopeful a state law can do more than that, seeing as our ability to address this issue is quite limited, given what is in state law and federal law right now. So, that's what we're working on with this particular item. No further lights? Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Begley, Harding. Mr. President, item eighty-four is approved, seven to zero. Item eighty-five, a resolution to support legislation if introduced, amending the Property Tax Request Act.
Public hearing and vote on number eighty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. Item eighty-five just gives us permission to work with other entities in seeking to amend the Property Tax Request Act, which is LB six forty-four that passed the legislature in 2021. The bill was passed, but it hasn't been effective in the sense that no subdivision has to meet the requirements until 2022. However, as we've studied the issue, both the city council and your staff and the city finance department, we have concerns as to the dates that the special hearing is required between multiple entities that have property taxing authorities. This includes the cities, this includes school districts, of course, which we have many within Douglas County, and it includes the county itself, would be required to have a joint public hearing to hear from the public if their property tax levy stays at the same rate, but yet somehow they still raise more revenue. And with that, we want to continue to work with the state and try to make this a workable plan.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Begley, Harding. Mr. President, item eighty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item eighty-six, a resolution to support if introduced, the revision and updates to Chapter fourteen of state statutes.
Public hearing and vote on number eighty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. LB, I'm sorry, excuse me. Agenda item eighty-six is a request to support the work of the State of Nebraska's Urban Affairs Committee of the State Legislature. They've undertaken the task of trying to reform and rewrite Chapter fourteen of state law. Chapter fourteen deals primarily with cities of the metropolitan class. Metropolitan-class cities are defined under state laws having a population of three hundred thousand or more, and by happenstance, Omaha is the only city that falls in that category. So, Chapter fourteen directly affects the City of Omaha, and we just want permission to work with that committee to rewrite the law. But in the sense, we're only, we're only modernizing some of the language. We're not doing any changes that are specific or would do anything that would substantively change laws. It's merely a cleanup task, and we just ask for the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because we don't have anything in front of us, but I just want, Jack, will you just promise that you'll send us the revision so that we make sure something isn't thrown in there that's not just kind of making sure the semantics are correct?
Absolutely. If I could, council member, right now, we've received a rough draft from the state Urban Affairs Committee, and the draft is two hundred and seven pages long. So, I don't know if you want that sent to you. I'm happy to do it.
Yes, please.
But we, the City Law Department and the various departments that are affected by it, will be taking a fine look at the changes to make sure there's nothing substantive. We're going to ask finance to look at it, planning along with the law.
Right. I just want to make sure what we're passing today is actually, yes, we want to be a part of making sure we know what the changes are, but it may be, we may oppose a change or two if something gets thrown in.
Right, right. And we will push back if there are substantive things placed within there.
Appreciate that.
And that's happened before with the other cities.
Yeah, that's, and that's why, that's why I just wanted to clarify.
Very good.
Thank you. And with that, I'll motion approve.
Motion, second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Begley, Harding. Mr. President, item eighty-six is approved, seven to zero. Item eighty-seven, a resolution to support LB four fifty-three to require landlords to comply with certain ordinances and change provisions relating to remedies under the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act.
Public hearing and vote on number eighty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. This resolution asks for support for a bill that's already been introduced at the legislature in 2021. That was the first year of the two-year cycle, so the bill is, it was heard in Judiciary Committee, it was advanced from committee on a seven to zero to one vote, so it will be forwarded to the full legislature for debate. If I could, short summary, if you will, of the bill is essentially, it says that before any landlord can receive extra funding, that's coming down now through the federal government or allocated by cities or counties, they would have to be in compliance, not only with state law on landlord-tenant acts, but they also would have to comply with local law, whereas in the City of Omaha, we have a registration requirement, therefore, they would have to be in compliance with local law as well. So, council members, Festerson asks for your support of this bill.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Mama, sorry to keep you here longer. Sorry, y'all. She's looking in. Erin Feigstinger, Director of Advocacy and Policy at Together, eight one two South Twenty Fourth Street. Our mission is to prevent and end homelessness and hunger in our community, and in pursuit of that mission, we were active supporters of Omaha's rental ordinance, which you passed in 2019, and why we helped to introduce LB four fifty-three in the last legislative session. The intention of the rental inspection ordinance, as you all know, is twofold. One, it is to protect and grow the availability of safe, affordable housing in our community by ensuring that all housing is in compliance with minimum housing codes of safety and habitability. And second, it is to protect those in our community who do not feel they can advocate for the health and safety of their housing because of their circumstances. This is primarily the people that we serve at Together, who, as a result of their circumstances, are more susceptible to unhealthy and unaffordable housing. A proactive inspection system protects all of us, and, but it only works if we target where the problems exist, and this is the function of the registration requirement of this ordinance to help you help our community. This ordinance, as you all know, went into effect January first, 2020. All rental properties in Omaha were required to complete the free registration process by March thirty-first, 2020. As part of our research and evaluation work, we checked eviction filings against the publicly available rental registration database throughout 2020 and found that of one thousand nine hundred and eighty residential eviction filings within Omaha city limits in 2020, that one thousand and sixty-five of those were from addresses that were not in compliance with the registration requirement of the ordinance as they were supposed to be. When this system is not working as it's intended to, it's the very people this ordinance was designed to help who are going to be left behind, and this undermines the health of our community and impedes our efforts to intervene and assist. The opposition to this bill in Judiciary Committee, it was a super-long day, not as long as this day seems to be going, but definitely long. The opposition was around limiting a landlord's ability to evict a tenant. I want to be very clear that this bill does not limit that ability. Omaha's registration is free, and landlords can complete it one day and evict the very next. Your planning department has done an excellent job of making this process very easy for landlords. They've hosted a lot of education sessions. The other line of opposition came from the Metropolitan Omaha Property Owners Association, who argued that the ordinance was unconstitutional and unenforceable, which the courts have found not to be true. Since that ruling, the Metropolitan Omaha Property Owners Association has drafted an addendum to a lease that I'll give to each of you that would ask the tenant to waive their right to the proactive inspection and not allow city inspectors into their units. And what this means is that a tenant who allows a city inspector into their unit will be in violation of their lease agreement and can be evicted for the same, making the registration portion of this ordinance, which this bill targets, all the more important in protecting those members of our community who are at risk of homelessness. In the interest of fairness, the participants, the people that we serve at Together, are asked to comply with complex legal documents or risk losing their homes. All we are asking here is for property owners to comply with the most basic and free part of the ordinance you passed before making someone homeless. And I forgot to give this to you. Sorry. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today?
Cheryl Weston, one eight one one Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I would like to thank you, President, Councilmember Festerson, for bringing this forth and introducing this. I think this is an excellent bill, and as previously stated, it did pass, and what I've given is a copy of, you may or may not already have, but of the of the bill. And I just wanted to make sure, because it'll be on the record for those who are watching. This bill, introduced by Senator McKinney, LB four fifty-three, is to acknowledge the hurdles that the State of Nebraska has in ensuring that residents are housed in safe and secure places. This bill would require landlords to comply with the registration ordinance, which was passed here at the city council, before being able to recover under any remedies provided underneath the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act. The intended effect of this bill is to empower the City of Nebraska to ensure the safe housing and keep individuals from reaping benefits from the system which compliance standards have not met. And I think that's really important, if it's something that you did, you passed, that we need to hold the landlords accountable for this. On the second page is the summary of the changes that are being asked. It adds a requirement for landlords. By requiring compliance with the local rental registration ordinance, which you passed, the proposal will limit the ability for a landlord to claim remedies when the rental agreement is terminated, such as damages and attorney fees, if the landlord does not comply with the local rental registration ordinance. And I think this is important, again, because this is the ordinance that the city passed, and this would also help. And I know during, when we had the COVID problem, and there were a lot of people who weren't able to take care of and were evicted, Councilman Melton, you were the one that really worked with the volunteer attorneys when the eviction process came up and helped to get, and Together Inc. there. So, this is important, and I do appreciate being, that President Festerson did bring this forth. And as it says, the sections, section one, regarding duties of the landlord to add language, requiring the landlord to comply with this, and then section two, remedies when a rental agreement is terminated. And this is really important, and it gives teeth to what was originally passed here by the city council. So, hopefully, that you will pass this, and Jack will be able to go down. And as it was stated by Together Inc., this passed overwhelmingly in the Judiciary Committee, and I think with the support of saying that the city council here, Omaha, would help to make this move along and secure this bill. So, thank you for your time, and again, hopefully, you'll pass it.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something, Erin or Jack. Jack, you mentioned that they couldn't receive any of the funds, but that, I don't think that that's part of the bill.
Right. I'm a spoke.
Okay.
I apologize. It's not in any rules or regulations regarding the federal funds that have been sent our way. I just, I made a jump that maybe that would be a possibility, but it's not a mandate by any means and not part of it. So, I apologize.
In all honesty, because, well, I just wanted to make sure of that, because I think my, mine and Erin's concern would be tomorrow morning, if we are maybe keeping somebody in their house, that could actually create homelessness. So, this would probably be better than doing it that way.
Right, exactly. Nope, I understand, and what I was thinking was, you know, before we move forward with grants, we typically say, and you're in compliance with federal, state, and local law, and so that was just the next conclusion I drew as a step, but it's not written anywhere, so you're correct.
No, no, thank you, Jack. I just wanted to clarify that. And I would agree, and I agree with, A, I have a little, and I did a lot of research, and I read this, my concern is that it could apply to people who don't need to apply because, or register. So, there are times where you have two people living together, they're not a landlord-tenant situation, but you have to use the eviction statutes in order to get the other person out. I mean, sometimes you have the bad breakup. These are things that I actually have had to deal with. And so, one person has to evict the other one, even though there was no landlord-tenant. So, Erin, those are my concerns, but when I look at this and I look at the fact that we're only looking at section one thirty-five, I mean, sorry, fourteen thirty-five, which is only for termination of a lease. So, it wouldn't be for any other types of eviction. Am I correct on that? I know you're not a lawyer, but I'm asking. It's, and the reason I'm asking is sometimes we have things that look really good, but there's unintended consequences. And I've been there and done that in front of the Supreme Court with poorly drafted statutes, you know, and I've actually won my case after doing a bunch of legal acrobat, acrobatics in doing it, but it all comes down, the one thing I think, at one time in front of the Supreme Court, the opposing counsel and I both agreed, the statute's poorly drafted. So, I want to make sure we don't have that here.
Yeah, and I will tell you, working with Senator McKinney on this, we are more than happy to clarify those kinds of things as we move forward. The way I'm reading it, and you're right, I'm not a lawyer, I just play one in the mornings when I show up to eviction.
You do it well, though. You do it very well.
Thank you. I think it's the blazer. I don't know. Or the glasses, whatever. I think the way that I read it and the way that we intend it to be written was, if the rental agreement is terminated, so like, in general, any sort of termination because of a noncompliance with the lease, because of nonpayment, right, any sort of that, that we, that we would have to check and see, or that you would have to be registered according to any existing ordinance before you avail yourself of the legal process.
So, I like the idea of this. I'm not so sure I'm sold on the language.
Well, let's work on it.
So, I think we can work on it. I'm going to say no, but it's kind of a yes. What I, what I would like to do is work on the language to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences, that maybe we work on some exceptions, because as drafted, I think there needs to be some work done, so that the intention is, if you are a landlord that does have to be registered, you are registered, and it's not that you can't sue, and a lot of people were saying, well, you can't sue. Well, you can, but if somebody notices that you're not, you may not have the remedy available is what it says, but there may need to be some exceptions to this.
Yeah, and the intention
So, that's my, that's my issue.
Right. And the intention was for it to be as simple as possible, which is why we focus specifically on just the registration piece. Like, there's nothing to do with the code enforcement or anything like that, just
No, I agree, and I agree with the amendment under seventy-six fourteen nineteen. I just think that there needs to be some more work done under seventy-six fourteen thirty-five on subsection two, but I'm willing to work with everybody, and I do appreciate the work you do, and I will see you tomorrow morning. So, my no is not a no.
I will be there tomorrow morning.
If I could just do like a no and a half, that's, you know, in between.
I'm just trying to help you in court. That's my main goal.
Thank you.
Okay, no further lights? Is there a motion? Motion, second, roll call. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two. Item 88, A Resolution to Designate Jack Chalowas as the Official Lobbyist of the City of Omaha.
Public hearing on vote on number 88 is today, proponents. I assume you're a proponent of this one.
Yeah, yes, sir. Jack Chalowas, City Lobbyist. Each year this resolution is placed before the council. It gives me the authority to represent the City of Omaha before the state legislature. I've sometimes shared that resolution with state senators. They've asked, you know, who am I and why am I there? So it, so it gives me some authority, gives me some credibility to serve you, the city council, the mayor, and the various departments. Likewise, as importantly, it also gives me the authority to work with our departments, gather information from them that's relative and relevant to the bills that are in Lincoln. And for those reasons, I ask that you approve item 88. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
I'll second. If this gives Jack this great credibility, then I will second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 88 is approved, seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, we thought we might take the liquor licenses at this point. We think we saw some folks that are waiting for those, and they should go further quickly before we complete the public hearings. Without objection, we'll do that. And so that takes us back to number 18.
This is for Casanova's Butchery.
This one did not have time. I don't know if we have the applicant with us since then.
She's here.
Great. And that's Ms. Miller. Okay, we'll take you off mute here in a second. So this is, we did not close the public hearing, but I'll recognize the applicant here to provide comments if she's still there on the We're working to get you off mute. Appears we're not having luck with that. In the meantime, we could go to number 20, which was also delayed.
And the applicant has requested if we could postpone to the December 7 meeting.
For number 20?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion, two-week layover.
Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
And we've got number 21 also correct. This was the Class Z request. And we had Mr. Kelly, who was by Zoom. We'll try and see if that works. I see two Mike Kellys on there. Well, we're having trouble with the applicant one more time, but we did discuss this earlier. Yep. 21.
21, that we delay this to the next meeting.
We don't have time. It's due back to the state before that.
Because both are here. I spoke with Alejandra's husband to, you know, because she had registered but somehow wasn't in at the time when she came up. I know they've made the effort. We're having technical difficulties. I know Mike Kelly, his representative for his client, made the effort. His, we're having technical difficulties. I don't know, and since there's no time, I'm comfortable with approving both of them, knowing that the efforts were made by both parties to be here, and it was because of technical difficulties, at least at this point. I don't think we should hold that against them. So I don't know if we're on eight, I don't know if we're on 18 or 20.
We're on 21 at the moment.
Yeah, we're on 21 at the moment, so.
So for 21, I'm not comfortable with that because I had a constituent that had some concerns, and I need to, on the record, for those concerns to be addressed by Mr. Kelly. I understand that we have technical difficulties, which is normal, but that needs to be dealt with.
And so just to point out a clarification too, so should we not take action on this this week, today, realizing there's not more time to delay? It could go to the Liquor Commission without a, without a recommendation, right? That's what would occur?
Correct. And then it's just approved 10 days after they receive it.
Unless we do dispense of it today and presumably approve it. So those seem to be our two options at the moment, unless Mike Kelly can come off mute and address your concerns.
Hello?
All right, well, we're going to, we're on, we're on 21 right now. Let's, let's dispense of one before we go back to the other one.
I would, I would make, so can I, am I up?
Go ahead.
Mr. President, sorry, I was, so I talked
Because we got that opposition, I wanted to make sure I knew what was going on. So for this particular bar, the re, and by the way, I thought it was very interesting because I hadn't seen a Z, a Class Z. I'm not sure if I've seen a Class Z ever, but, so I thought that was interesting. But they're not selling alcohol. This is not a bar. So I think maybe the opposition was a little, they didn't necessarily understand they are manufacturing alcohol here, they're, they aren't serving it, it's not a bar. So it's just a place where you can go buy the alcohol. It's only off sale, and it's a Z, meaning you can't make it a bar. So that's, that's why I'm comfortable with it, because it literally is a manufacturing place, not a liquor establishment. But they still have to have a liquor license. So even though they're just selling it, they have to have a liquor license, so they're under all the same rules as anybody else that has liquor in their business.
Thank you.
And I moved to support, I moved to approve it.
Motion in a second. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And surely, we like to listen to the council member for the district. On this particular one, let me make sure we are talking about
21.
21, okay. I talked to Mr. Kelly earlier, and he actually asked me for Councilmember Johnson's number, who, that's the district that it is. And I said, well, I haven't talked to her, but I can't just give you her cell phone. We just don't do that. So he, he did try to make contact, and then in the discussion, I don't know if he talked to others as well, it was, they're not selling, there's not going to be a lot of truck traffic, this isn't your typical bar. But because it's the, whatever's going on here with the distillery or brewing, they still have to apply. And it is different. I don't remember seeing this one. So with that, I would feel comfortable voting for this one.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I kind of want to reiterate, I just want to agree with Mr. Palermo. I don't, I think I'm a Class Z. It's not, I don't know that you can even go in there and buy a bottle of booze, can you?
You can buy for off sale.
For, okay, you can.
There's no onsite consumption.
No onsite consumption. So I'm okay with that as well. Although we might need one right now, yeah.
Get some Okay, and after all that, it appears Mike Kelly is off mute now. Mike, would you like to say anything?
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm weak in the technology area. Anyway, Mike, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here on behalf of the applicant. Again, this is a very unique application. It's for a micro-distillery. And the micro-distillery has, there's no, no request for a tasting room, therefore there'll be no retail activity here. They could be, they could just as easily be baking cookies in there. No one will know. There'll be no, there's, again, no retail activity. It should be ver, zero disruption to the neighborhood, and I mean zero, because it would just, it's a very small operation of one or two people who are going to make a micro-distilled product, alcohol product, and in a, in a, in a small space. So there is, there is no bar activity of any kind. And with that, I would answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. I can't even remember if I closed public hearing on this, but I'm going to close it just in case. And there is a motion in a second to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero.
Okay, now we're back to 18, and Ms. Miller, I think we'll be able to get you off mute as the applicant. There we go. All right.
Hello, good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon.
Hello. Name and address, please.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Alejandro Miller. And my address is 10914 Elm Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144. And today, we would like to ask you for your approval to have a liquor license for our new business, Casanova Butchery. In this location, we would be doing, selling raw meat and cheese, as well as some imported groceries. We would also like to have some wine to go, so people can pair it to cook at home with it. No consumption at the premises. It'll all be to go.
Thank you. And you've requested an amendment to a Class D liquor license, right?
Yes, requested to change it to Liquor D.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents on this one today? Any opponents to number 18? Public hearings closed? The amended?
For the amendment.
Okay, there's amendment. Motion in a second, roll call on the amendment.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
And then as amended? Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 89, An Ordinance Awarding a Contract to First Star Fiber, Inc. for the Omaha Mixed Recyclables Processing 2022/2031 Project with an Estimated Year-One Cost of $2,400,000.
Public hearing on number 89 is today. Thank you, Jim and Dale, for sticking around for this.
Yeah.
Proponents, please.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works, just here to answer any questions that any of you may have, and Dale's here for answering questions that you may have for First Star on this contract.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Good evening. Dale Gubel, 1211 Cork Drive Pavilion, and also here to answer any questions you might have, but I'd also like to, on behalf of our 100-plus employees, thank you for your support of recycling and of our contract. And I'd also like to invite you all out to see our operation. We'll be putting another employee on board here in about two weeks, but he's a robot, so you're welcome to count, see, Roby. Robbie, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hello, Scott Blake, 2316 North 52nd Street. I just want this to be on the record, that NebraskaLand Recycling failed to submit the required documents. And if y'all remember, last year, we were one vote away from awarding them a $20 million, $20 million 10-year contract, and then they, they cannot submit the required documents. I'm a little bit concerned that this is going to be voted on next week. I know we're not allowed, not allowed to ask questions, but I am worried that will NebraskaLand have the opportunity to submit the required documents late? I certainly hope not. I did a little bit of research on NebraskaLand. I found a complaint about truck traffic at 1:30 in the morning. They were on, they were in the, it's in the attachment, is where I'm getting NebraskaLand from. I fully support, excuse me, I fully support First Star Fiber, and thank you, Jim Tyler, for all you do.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. I will just say one thing while you're here, and because you waited so long on this item, I do appreciate your work as well. I think this reaffirms the council did do the right thing over a year ago now, when we had those competitive bids before us. I think a number of us just didn't feel we had the confidence and the viability of what was recommended, and otherwise had a lot of questions about the economics. And now we're back here today. I want to thank Jim Tyler for kind of sticking it out and finding an interim solution in the meantime that involved two providers and kept our recycling program going and that processing continuing. And I think we do have a better solution before us here today that actually has a lower ceiling price than what we had previously, 140 per ton, down to 100 per ton, so better for taxpayers too. So I appreciate what you've done, and I look forward to supporting this in a couple weeks. And they are the only bidder at this point. There is no one else that could be considered because the department considered other bids to not be qualified or not have been responsive to what was issued. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tyler, it's your lucky day, since it's so late at night. I cut these questions in half. And just a response, Mr. Blake had made a comment about the bid not being responsive, and I too dug into the details, trying to figure out how we got to this point. I looked at both bids. There were two bids submitted. One was not allowed, and that would be NebraskaLand. So, Mr. Tyler, could you, could you tell me what, like, what happened? Why was the bid from the big committee not accepted? Yeah, and I have a copy of the letter that we gave to Mr. Brown on the bid rejection, so I'll go ahead and put this up on the screen if that's Yeah, and I'll summarize it. It's, it's a rejection letter, and you got so many days, and yeah. And, and so, in, in short, there was information that if the bidder wanted to be held confidential, not subject to a public request, there was a means to provide that for in a confidential manner. Okay? And First Star Fiber followed those rules, and we were able to have that confidential information provided to us. NebraskaLand did not, so there was not information provided that we needed for the bid. We just did not submit it. And there were other items not submitted that were part of the previous bid. For example, on the previous bid, in a plan of operations, he provided a detailed sketch of how the facility would operate. There was no plan of operations. All we knew is that he intended to expand to a different location. There were no details from him on how that was going to operate. So for all of those reasons, we could not accept the bid. So the bid wasn't, that was not accepted, having looked at both bids, I requested them weeks ago, and you know I did. They're the same bid, from last time, when they were selected, to this time, when they're not. And this is what I've been digging, this is what I've been trying to figure out, it just doesn't add up. So in the, like I said, in the first bid, he had a plan of operations that had a detailed sketch of how the facility would operate. In the second bid, there was no plan of operations submitted, so we could not, when he said that he intended to move, we had no, and we knew that people had issues with the current location, we had no ability to judge what his new facility would be. He did not submit that. That was required submittal. He did submit a plan of operations of how his current facility would operate on the first bid. Okay, so the drawing he would draw by free hand of the location, you're already aware of Along with an explanation of how all of that would work together. That we already take product to. And I'll tell you where I'm going with this, because again, it just doesn't add up that you stood before me, and I supported you. I supported you for many reasons. For one, no offense to First Star, I like First Star, I've been there, I've toured it, Dale, I like you. But I was on that committee, and I remember them discussions where, with no better way to say it, we had a gun to our head, where recycling was seriously, was seriously in jeopardy in this town because of the price we were given. I've looked back through all this. I haven't forgotten, just like you. We, we talked and lived this for so long. It didn't take me long to refresh myself, but the one thing I remembered was
It didn't take me long to refresh myself, but the one thing I remembered was how close we were. And that was disappointing because we worked so hard on the FCC contract, which I supported you on as well. So, as I dig through all these details, and I see this bid that is very similar to the first bid that was approved, keep in mind, I took a beat down from the neighborhood based on your recommendation, the Public Works Director's recommendation, the mayor, Todd Fitzer, Jim Key, sorry, Jim, to throw you in there, but you've been here all day, so you need to be mentioned, to make this work in my district. This is a small business in my district that employs my constituents. And I had to explain to them how I was told by director, or by Todd Fitzer, that the traffic count was okay. 42nd D was okay. Litter was gonna be taken care of. Now, was there complaints? Absolutely. I went to this place when they first were awarded, and there were some issues. But I made some calls today to those people that had issues. They now have Lance's cell phone. And if they call him, he sends somebody out to pick up the litter when the wind blows in 10 minutes. So I, I sat on the sword for you to save the taxpayers of this city a lot of money. Because where we were, not only in jeopardy of recycling, and you could say we weren't, but that's truly where we were. I have all the notes of all the letters that were written from you, from Director Stube, from the mayor. I can go out and quote some of them on how we were. I agree with, and I agree with the mayor. She said we need to have a plan in place to prevent any disruption in recycling. Right? That, that's why I went, that's why it was denied, because the bid was too high, and it went back out. And then you courted a small business in my district and told us they could do it. And as far as I know, they've done it. But then you put the bids back out, and the bids came back exactly the same. And the same bid you didn't accept last time, except for some map, now you approved. I'm trying to figure out what I'm missing here, because I promise you, I've dug into this more than anybody, and it doesn't add up.
So, it's, it's much more than the map. There are a number of things that were required to be submitted that weren't submitted. Okay, and you can work with our law department on how we interpreted that. For a number of reasons, let me, let me put this better. We, we did put out a better bid this time that we believe provides for a better share of risk between the owner and the provider. Okay? Even if we were able to consider the bid from Nebraska Land, our recommendations would have been going to First Star because of the numbers and the dollars that came in behind the bid and the facility that he has in operation.
It doesn't add up with the bid. You have the math, I have the math. And if we're gonna keep mentioning law on this bid, we can go to Section 10-110, which the city attorney, Mr. Koozie, gave me. And we've had bids before that were noncompliant and minor defect. So if you're gonna talk about a bid that was given to you, that was the same bid before, except for the map wasn't drawn on the facility, you know what I call that, Mr. Tyler? A minor defect. And here's the funny thing. Lance Brown, he didn't wanna say anything. He's like, well, you know, we didn't get it. Maybe in the future, we will. He, he wasn't impressed, but as we sit here representing our district and our constituents' jobs, that's why I'm upset about it. So let me ask Mr. Koozie. This Section 10-110 was amended on 7/20 of 2021. Can you tell me why?
Matt Koozie, City of Omaha Law Department. The ordinance was revised at that time so that the personal or company check and the proper bid security amount would be included amongst the list of minor defects. And then it went on to add what other minor defects were, but it was specifically designed to exclude personal or company checks in bid security amounts to be removed, or excuse me, specifically included as a minor defect so that it could be considered for bids. And that was after a contested appealed bid hearing that that ordinance came about.
Yeah, it was a rejection after I sat here for many years talking about how we could be sued as a city if we didn't accept the lowest and the best. And all of a sudden, a company comes in, they got eight lawyers, and guess what? We amend it for a minor defect. Okay, I got some questions for you, because now we're gonna go on to the pricing part of it. And again, it's a good thing it's evening, because I got pages and pages. So, where we sit today with the bid, well, let me back up. How long has First Star Fiber had a recycling contract with the City of Omaha?
I believe 2006, 2006.
Since 2006?
That's correct.
Okay. And just recently, it was kind of subdivided for picking up recyclables?
So, so the, as we were trying to get bids approved, and they did not pass, the most recent contract expired. So yes, what we did is, is because his contract directly with him expired, we worked directly with FCC to just give them an amendment to provide the holler to means to take it to where they could get the prices from, and then they would deliver it. We would reimburse through that, that means.
Okay, I'm sort of following you. So, with today's market, today, because I understand how this stuff is traded. And I, and I don't wanna simplify it, Dale, because I know it's really, really difficult. But honestly, we've invested as a city to have a recycling cart that's picked up every other week. And we know the numbers are even more than we predicted. We, we all know that, right? Recycling's way up, and that's a great thing. And this isn't about doing away with recycling. This is about things that happen that you gotta ask questions about that just don't make sense when we get bids. And certain companies are picked, and certain companies aren't, even when they're a current provider, and they've done the job, and you've referred them, but now you're not. And I'm not gonna let you hide behind that bid wasn't legit, because that was a minor defect. And we've already shown, the city attorney has already said that minor defects, then bids are sometimes taken, and we've seen it. So I'm not gonna let you hide behind that. So with, with today's market, today's market, say something goes out, what would we get from the two providers back to the city?
Okay, um...
What would we, let me...
Sure.
Public record, what would we get from First Star, and what would we get back from the city from Nebraska Land in today's market?
In today's market, according to the bid we put out. I'm gonna give you this chart.
Today's market on what we're doing right now, what we're paying for?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So here's a chart that I spoke to some of you about when we were presenting. And the blue line is the market value. So it shows that market going up and the kind of stabilizing, and it's, it's going way up compared to where it was. Okay, so right now, this is First Star's bid, okay? And it's looking over time, that's how that market changed these past four or five months. We've been paying about $25 per ton. Okay, that's today's market. I don't have the number for Nebraska Land, because I can't consider its bid. I can get that number. We're gonna need it. Okay.
We're gonna need it. So let me just guess. In today's market, the City of Omaha would get more back?
I, I can tell, I can tell you that I'm gonna go by memory, okay? I can tell you from today's market, I think that we would be getting a credit back from Nebraska Land for $14. I believe that's the number.
And we would be paying another recycling provider?
What, what we will be paying in today's market to First Star is $25 per ton. According to the bid from, sorry.
Sorry.
According to the bid that we could not accept from Nebraska Land, he would have given us a credit of $14 a ton back. Now, that's in today's market. A year ago, okay, if we were a year, let me just finish, please, if that's okay. On the other end of the bids, Nebraska Land was much higher, okay? So for example, a year ago, we would be paying about $125 per ton to First Star. Okay, we would have been paying about $140 per ton if we would have been able to go with Nebraska Land's bid. So on the low end, we're protected much better by First Star.
Okay, thanks for telling me about a year ago, but I'm talking about today and moving forward that we actually pay for out of our budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, since you brought that up about going back a year, let's say we move forward three years. What would we continue to get back from First Star? And the bid that isn't there, how, how would that sit? Was that locked in?
So, so we've locked in a price with this contract with no matter what happens in the market, okay? The, the low end, the most we would ever pay First Star is $125 per ton if the market tanks. Excuse me. Where the markets are right now, we are paying $25 per ton. If you look at a historical average, okay, we would pay, and, and I'm just, I'm just trying to help you understand the numbers, okay?
Oh, I understand, trust me. I'm, I'm asking you.
If we look for a historical average, that commodities index over the past 10 years would have averaged to about $125 on the commodity side, and the bid we would pay either one would have been $75 per ton. So they were equal.
Okay, so let me, let me, on public record, during public hearing, I, I, I want everybody to understand what you said. In today's market, Nebraska Land's bid, we would get money back as a city, but in today's market, under First Star Fiber, we're paying them.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not gonna go back a year, because it doesn't work that way. We, we know the mixed recyclables was a disaster, and, and I haven't got to that part yet, but we know that. But if we're talking three years from now, and the, and the market rebounds, we're locked in with First Star at this rate, which is already costing us money, but three years from now, if that market rebounds, which we hope it does, right? For, for everything in the world, how much more money are we gonna be losing as a city? And where do you get this money from?
So, so the most with Nebraska Land's bid, the most we would have ever gotten was a credit back of 14. And the most, ye- yes, that's the highest number he had. And then the, the bid from First Star, it's a payment of 25.
You know I'm gonna get the bid.
I, absolutely. And I can provide you, I'll, I'll go back and revisit it, make sure I'm not giving you anything that's incorrect.
I'd make you put it up on the overhead right now, but that's fine. So you guys have heard that. And at the city, we know we pick the lowest and best.
Correct.
So, the question isn't best, because we're already using two people that, we like them both. But I fight for the people in my district, just like we all do. But I also fight for the city. And now we've heard that we're paying more with what you're recommending. This is the part I have not been able to understand for a month. It doesn't add up to me. You... Something's missing. Something's missing. The more you talk, you might catch it.
If you, I'm, I'm an engineer. I get into statistics and numbers, okay? If you statistically look at what the markets have been over the years, which is the only way to predict where they're going, we have two bids that were basically statistically equal, okay? And we looked at that. And we had one that was a little different on the high end, and one that was a little different on the low end. Other than that, we have a facility that's operating and has been working for us for over 15 years, and they are the only one that provided a bid that we could accept.
It's funny, because you didn't say that six months ago, or a year ago. You told us what we had to have for a bid, and that bidder supplied you the same exact bid, leaving the financials out before. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Tyler. You know this is tough, because I like you, especially the work you do. You put a lot of work in. How many times did you reach out, reach out to, when we were going through this process of, we've now approved FCC, we got 20 years, everybody's got two carts, maybe three, recycling's working, we know it's working. And then all of a sudden, we get that bombshell that the markets have crashed, and guess what, Omaha? You don't know it, but your recycling's in jeopardy. So... I'm not gonna say it. I'm, I'm gonna let you say it, but I'm not gonna say it. So we get to this point. We know how important recycling is. And then you submit a five-year bid. I'm not gonna talk about options, and I'll tell you why. But if we're that serious on picking up recyclables, and we really truly care as a community, why only a five-year bid?
To be honest, we, we know there's questions and concerns about the market volatility. And just even though we believe we have done much better with this bid to deal with that, both to protect ourselves and to protect a facility from having to come back to us for more money, because we believe we have a bid that's protecting us on that, we still wanted to give us ourselves the flexibility to, let's, let's go with five. Everything's going the way it should. We got two five-year renewable periods. So we have up to 15 years if this thing works right.
But we got five.
We have five with two-year renewables if everything works correctly.
Okay, great. That doesn't matter. You, you presented a five-year bid. I understand there's gonna be legs of it, and that's great. But you got carts that are gonna sit in people's yards and alleys and backyards and hills for the next 20 years, but recycling, you only brought it forward five. And I understand you wanna protect yourself. And the reason I understand is I've also seen how many change orders we've had from the current provider that we've had from 2006. Can you tell me how many times that First Star has presented, even recently, a change order of, this is what we want, or we're not picking it up? I mean, I'm not making this stuff up. It's all public knowledge here. That's why I can't put this together.
No, I, I have some notes on that. The most, the change order that happened first was when, I think Dale came to us, I think it was around early 2019. And at that, that time, when the markets were crashing, we agreed to pay $25 a ton, which we felt that even though that probably was well below what was costing him, it was less than what was at the landfill. So we thought that that was something that was palatable to the council at that time. That was the First Amendment with him. The Second Amendment was one, we did not award the contract to him with the first bid. That was rejected. So we went ahead and extended a, basically a contract where we paid $110 per ton with some modifications for additional payment depending on, I can't remember exactly, but it was basically $110 per ton base rate. And that was the Second Amendment that we had with Dale. And those were both in the most previous, or most recent contract, okay? There were times previously, there was a amendment, I believe it was in 2008, where the, we stopped providing curbside glass collection and went to only drop-off sites for glass.
No, Jim, actually, that was in 2006. It was no glass collecting.
Okay, 2006. Thank you.
Okay. Do you think the city's been a fair partner with First Star?
I think we've had some issues in the past. I believe we structured a contract that's gonna be fair to allow us to be fair with both parties and get a fair price for the city.
I think it's almost been two days exactly to the date of the rejection letter that went out. And part of that letter is quotes from people, your boss, who, I mean, I've agreed with. I agree with her on FCC. I agreed with her on Nebraska Land. And she says we need to have a plan in place to prevent any disruption in recycling. We certainly do. So you don't cut out the bidder who's actually benefited the city, because if there was only one bidder, if there was only, it's, it's late. We don't hear that anyway. If there was only one bidder, we would be in trouble right now as a city. Nebraska Land came in, and because of the competitive bid, brought those rates down for everybody. Here's another quote. I'm just gonna keep reading these. "We recognize the change in the recycling business. It required us to pay for processing. But this bid, and, and this bid from First Star is excessively high." And we, and listen to this, everybody, "and would, and would require significant cuts in our 2020 budget," said Mayor Gene Stothard. So you're bringing me a company who, when I said earlier, I didn't know if recycling was gonna last in this town, but here we got quote after quote of the company you're picking.
Can I respond to this one, please? Because, so that was a quote after a bid that we chose to reject because we agreed, we felt the price was high. And I, actually, I agree with you. I believe that the competition allowed First Star to sharpen their pencils and get us a better bid. I personally... I personally agree with that. Uh, we asked, we had, I think the competition has been good. I think Nebraska lands are very good business, and they're not going to go out of business. They're going to stay and do what they do, but I believe the competition, the system worked, and we got a better bid for the city.
When you needed Nebraska land, how many times did you reach out to them before for that bid that you wanted to, to remain competitive for our city? How many times did you court Nebraska land in here?
Well, first, I would say that...
The mayor, the director, how many times did you call them and email them and text them?
We didn't necessarily court Nebraska land, he came to us first, and then we spoke a number of times because we felt the competition was warranted in the city.
How many times you talked to them this go around?
Twice. And I didn't think it was appropriate to talk beyond that because it was competitive bid.
We've already had this discussion, you know it didn't end on the greatest end with me. And now you see where I'm coming from. This is a small business in my district that, and it was just bad business. You used them until you didn't need them. And those are constituents that live in my district that work there. Now, are they going to stay up and operational? Absolutely they will, just like we heard that First Star was only 20% of their business came from Omaha, and maybe it's up from then. Let me ask you a question before, when First Star came to us with these, these bids, were they going to charge us more than other surrounding cities to recycle the same product?
At, at the time, um, when that was going on, when we did our research, um, we saw that his number was higher than what we were seeing in other cities.
It's late, but you can see how I can go on and on with this, and again, First Star Fiber, been there. I, I know they can do the job. Again, Dale, this, this is no offense to you, I'm not tearing apart your company. Trying to figure out what in the world's going on here at the city. We got the lowest, yeah, geez, exactly. You want to save all this money until it comes to a time when it don't benefit you. You got the lowest and best, but you didn't bring them forward because of a minor defect, which law has already said is okay. And now you're telling me that going with Nebraska land today saves you money? So listen up, colleagues. You want to represent your constituents and, and be, and be a cost saver? Is that what you want to do? Because the, the bid that's being provided in front of you today is not doing that. And there's more. I just can't figure out why, like, they're, they're not going to move now, so the neighbors who are mad, they're not going to move. They won't need to, they're still going to stay open. You only got a couple players in town, they're going to, they're going to make money. But I, I don't think you're being honest with any of us, whoever signed all of this stuff about what really happened, and why now First Star? Can't be because of the other company in that bid, it just can't be.
May I? Uh, I, all the bids have been provided to everyone, and I would allow them to look at their judgment on if they see that the bid Nebraska land provided is equivalent and the same as his previous bid because it just is not. And there are a number of reasons that are not minor defects that the law department pointed out with us on why we could not accept the bid.
Well, I'm sure now that we've crossed that threshold of, depending on what company comes in here with how many lawyers, we can determine anything's a minor defect. We can change it, we amended it on 7/20 of 2021. We can certainly amend it again for savings to the citizens of Omaha. Of a recycler who never put us under that threat of not recycling. And, and I, and I talk to you almost every single week about this, I remember how mad you were. Now all of a sudden, you're in front of me, you want me to pick the other company.
Sure, and I, I would like to work with the law department on clarification of our interpretation of this municipal code because we are not reject, we are not talking about minor defects, nothing that we had reference to minor defect. What we, I believe we were referencing in the code was our ability to reject based on not having the information provided. That's what I believe how we were referencing the code, and I'll, Bernard Indabash was the one that worked with me on this language, and, um, we'll make sure that, uh, I'm interpreting that correct.
Bernard, maybe we'll have to answer why a bid he received last time was the same as this time that wasn't picked, but I'm not calling you down, Bernard. I appreciate what you do, you already know where I was going to go with this, so.
Yeah.
I apologize for not bringing it to you at 10:30, but you already know I was going to ask you questions. Again, uh, if you didn't hear me loud and clear, this is not the lowest and best bid. Uh, the cost savings to the constituents and the taxpayers of Omaha do not go with First Star getting this bid. And you can get around any way you want with that minor defect or the non-compliant bid because we have before. If Lance wants to hire eight attorneys and bring them down like the other company, we'll see what happens. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. For, um, a couple of things first, then I was going to ask, uh, Mr. Goobles to, to come up, if you want to start coming up, Dale. The, the process, the process was done, the, um, the, the bidder that was, uh, determined to be non-responsive had the ability to challenge that, and from my understanding, he, he did not. So, um, I, I would, I would assume then that he, he also understood, or he agreed maybe with, uh, maybe not wanting to accept it mentally, but agreed that maybe the bid was non-responsive to the point that it wasn't worth a challenge. But Dale, I, I know you've been sitting there, and I wanted to give you a chance to, to respond to, to your bid and, and the potential, which I'll be supporting next two weeks from now, to move forward with, uh, with First Star to continue to provide our, our recycling, uh, collections, uh, or processing. I, I did want to note too that, um, Jim, maybe if you can just give me a, a head nod, um, our FCC agreement was actually a 10-year firm with a 10-year option, two five-year options, okay? So this one is a five-year firm with two five-year options. So, um, to say that the FCC is a 20-year and this is a five-year, I think is a little misleading because, um, in, in reality, FCC is a, a 10-year term, this is a five-year, 10-year firm term. This is a five-year firm term, but when you add in the options, one is 15, one is 20. But Dale, I, I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond to some of that.
Well, I, we'll say that the, the major difference between last year's bid and this year's, uh, RFB as Jim mentioned, did, in our mind, share the risk and rewards more equally. And I don't want to belabor that because it does get rather complicated, but the, the main thing boiled down to, um, well, perhaps I don't even have to do that because there was a third bidder last year. And our two bids were quite comparable to one another, and there was a slight difference in terms of a five-year versus a 10-year option. But in my mind, that should signal that we looked at in 2020 an RFP or RFB request that we felt, looking at either a five-year, which would have been a lower amount of time, the amount of risk put on our company would have required us to bid quite high. Because in 2019, there was a situation where the market index, which is what these prices are based on, kept saying all year long, the market was there, and it was buying and setting a price. The RFB said we would pay the city 60% of whatever that price was, we would share that. We didn't move any of that material that year because the market indexes are just that. They are a, uh, indication of what a whole cadre of mills will pay, but it doesn't take into account the distance that the end markets are from those, um, suppliers. First Star, Omaha, sitting where we are, are a long way from those markets. So throughout 2019, and there were other, um, Murphs throughout the region, it's been reported that they hauled material to the landfill because they couldn't sell it. We held on to that, we have thankfully a large facility where we could do that. And we have pictures showing the mountain of cardboard that sat outside of our building, and we never got paid for a lot of that. We ended up giving a lot of that away, relatively speaking. You know, we were taking $5 a ton at the end of the year, when the indexes at the beginning of the year were closer to the 20, 30, and 40, but no one was buying. So when we bid in 2020, we had to look at what can these markets do to us? And if we were going to guarantee to the city that when you set material out at the curb, you expect it to be recycled, we live up to that obligation. And that is a major reason why the bid was what it was last year. This year, just to be clear for everyone, the city took a different approach. It's based on an aggregate value of a variety of materials. It's been my experience in the 25 years or so that we've been in this business that the markets do fluctuate, and by having this aggregate value, it kind of evens out that up and down of one or two items. And cardboard and newspaper and paper still remains about 60% of what people set out.
And that, that aggregate is actually, I'm, I'm glad you're bringing this up because if I understand this correctly, the aggregate is based upon, really, there, there's an assumption of what each cart contains. So the, these, these are based upon, and that's why they're, that's actually one of the reasons why I, I keep going back. I wish we would have just done a flat fee, and you know what? If the markets are great for you, the markets are great for you, and if they're bad, you take on that risk. But that's, that ship has sailed a long time ago.
Yeah.
But that's what the, this, what you're, the pricing is based upon, or that what you're bidding really on, is an assumption, an agreed-upon assumption of what's in each cart.
Correct.
Okay.
And one of the other things that the city did, which takes it a step beyond a mere assumption because an assumption can lead to a lot of risk and, and potentially no rewards, that the current contract or the, the new contract will have at least twice a year where the city will do a material audit.
Yep.
And that will help us as well as the city determine, you know, how to get the best bid.
Right.
And with those changes, we didn't submit a bid, and we didn't do it last year or even when we started in 2004, when the first bid that we won, we looked at what is the reality of making this operation for the city work. And in our mind, when the residents go to the trouble of putting something out, they expect it to be recycled. And I've been in this business for almost 40 years, and I can tell you, that's not how all of our, um, and this is nothing against Nebraska land, but I'm saying that there are those who say, sorry, it's not recyclable, and it's going to landfill. If the city says this has to be recycled, by God, we will do everything in our power to make sure that it gets to a home where they actually make it into something. Because we want the trust of the residents that when they participate in this program, they're actually getting what the value that we said we need. And I, I'm not going to pull any punches or apology. It's a costly business to take what's in those carts, and it's all mixed together, and you're trying to separate it, and you're asking people to reach in and touch things. We're trying to move our employees to the higher level that we also know they deserve a better lifestyle as well. And we've been raising our salaries to them and giving out bonuses when there are good months, all with the idea that if this, this city wants to recycle, by God, let's make sure we do it so that the people who have to deal with it are being treated fairly and, uh, with the dignity that we all deserve.
Okay, thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Mr. Plermont.
Yeah, Ms. Dale, Mr. Goobles. Yeah, please. I just wanted to ask you a question. Well, first, I want to tell you that regardless of how this goes in a couple of weeks, my cart's going to be full. I encourage everybody to recycle, we'd love it. It's even full before the two weeks, but we just figure it out. So it's not about the recycling part. Did you, um, did you submit a 10-year bid?
We did.
Did you see the other 10-year bid?
We did.
Was your price higher or lower?
I couldn't tell you anymore.
Okay, I know that wasn't a fair question, so, um, thank you, appreciate it. I'm sure I'll be out again to see what's new and exciting, so, Mr. Tyler.
I say my name again, Jim Tyler, Public Works.
Sorry, I didn't make that roll, somebody else did.
That's okay.
I know who you are. So, yeah, you're right, I misspoke, we have 10-year with a 10-year with FCC, but you also put out a 10-year bid for recycling. Tell me why you didn't pick a 10-year bid.
Number one, the prices from First Star for the five-year and 10-year were identical. Okay, so we didn't have an, the only advantage we had with the bid that was in front of us was if we wanted to lock that 10-year period. And so we, as a, um, as a recommendation, we chose just because we've had volatility issues in the past, even though we thought this bid addressed them, that let's just do the five-year. That still gives us up to 15 years. That, that's, that was the decision point there. The prices were identical.
So, so the bid that everybody's going to see within the next couple of weeks is going to show two bidders, both a five-year and a 10-year. Tell me, tell me whose 10-year bid was, uh, more cost-efficient to the taxpayers of Omaha?
If, if you look at the numbers from bottom to top, and you can consider where the markets can go, we did a statist, I'm going to say this.
I don't want to guess.
You're going to ask this question, and I'm going to give you the same answer every time. Okay? We looked at all the numbers from bottom to top. Okay, if you do a statistical average of both bids, they are nearly identical because one's higher on the low end and one's lower on the high end. And if you look in the middle where the markets are mostly at, they're very identical.
It's not the way I read it. I read Nebraska land's 10-year was more affordable to us. You didn't pick that, you picked a five-year. Even though we got a 10-year and a 10-year with FCC, you, you still continue to pick a five-year for a recycling program, but that's fine. I'll probably have more questions.
Okay.
Email them to you.
Sure.
Then I'll make them public.
That's fine.
I'm, I'm going to figure out what, what, what happened on this whole process. And, and again, Lance Brown didn't, he's not here, he's not opposed to it. He didn't, he didn't, uh, appeal, there wasn't a bid rejection. He just said, that's what it is, I'm the one that did the digging because something wasn't right. It, it just wasn't right. And, and from what I read, the 10-year was more of a discount to the citizens, citizens of Omaha with Nebraska land. That's why, and then you bring the five-year forward, and if we care about recycling the way we do, we, we would lock in on that 10-year because your, your theory and logic, if we're going to assume market rates, would be the same that you say, well, we're going to lock into the five because the markets will change. First Star's already shown that if there's a problem, they just come and do a change order and then charge us more than anybody else. So I'm not buying that. But anyway, thank you, sir.
Can, can I add one more?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I just, I just want to add, okay, that, you know, we have nothing to hide. So whether it's publicly in front of this... publicly in front of this body, or privately, if you have questions, please ask me, because I'm just trying to give you the information you want.
Yeah, no, everybody's going to see the bid, and then you'll have to explain to everybody why you chose another company that was more.
Okay. No further lights. Next item.
Item 90, an ordinance to approve a facility interconnection and transportation service agreement with Black Hills Nebraska Gas LLC to connect the biothane facility to the Bellevue gas distribution system.
Public hearing on number 90 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Kamak. I am resident 2930 Sedalia Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, and I'm just here to answer any questions the council might have in regards to this project that Black Hills can answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for sticking with us. Any other proponents here today on number 90? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 91 and 92.
Oh, Ms. Melton, sorry.
No, and I just wanted to quickly, Paul, thank you for driving all the way here, and I'm sorry that you picked a day when we're going past 6 o'clock in order to come up for this.
That's fine.
But I appreciate it.
It wasn't your choice.
Thanks.
Thanks.
One public hearing can be held for items 91 and 92. Ordinance is to approve a memorandum of understanding with Local 251 and Simtech for increased shift differential pay for street maintenance employees and city maintenance foremen assigned to winter shifts during the 2021-2022 winter season.
Public hearings on number 91 and 92 are today. Proponents, please.
Good evening. David Grauman, on behalf of the Human Resources Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Mr. President. Mr. Grauman, come on up.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, here you have your name and address.
David Grauman, Human Resources Department, 1819 Farnham.
Thank you. In full transparency, I gave you the questions I was going to ask you to speed this process up. So let's have it. How many employees are we short in 251?
As of this morning, our AEO1 count is 48 of 96 budgeted, so we're 48 short. We have 28 of 31 in the AEO2 classification, so we're three short there. We have six of nine in the AEO3 classification, so we're three short there. MR2, we're 22 of 34, so we're 12 short. And you want the foreman now as well, just the 251 members?
No, we're taking them both together. So 66 is what you have. We're short on 251 employees.
Correct.
Okay. Second question with 251. Usually I ask this, and I looked, you do have the job posted, so I appreciate that. We're trying, we're trying our hardest, for whatever reason, 66 short. So yes, if we're talking about 92 as well, tell me how many of the foremen within street maintenance were short.
We are fully staffed, so we have 15 of 15 foremen one, two of two foremen two, and we are at five of five foremen three. And again, that's just the street maintenance division within Public Works.
Okay. So 251, we're 66 short, and we want them to have more money, because we know that it's a difficult job. We're pulling them away from their families. We're trying to retain them. We're trying to help them along. But we're also going to give it to the foremen, who are 100% fully staffed, which means it must be a pretty good job. And when I read about, we don't want the employees making more than management, then don't be management. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but there's no retention problem with managers, although we're going to give them the same benefits, or the same increased shift differential, or a shift differential, that we're given the employee classification that are 66 short. If it was my business, I would give it all to the department we're short in, because obviously, one, with job benefits, retirement package, is significantly more, and that's why they're 100% staffed. There was some language in here. It looks like you just kind of click, cut, paste, and you, it's almost in the same one. And the problem I have is what I just said with the Simtech employees, where you're saying, you're saying you're paying them because it's hard to keep them. Well, that's not true. This MOU here isn't actual, if that's the case. Inequity occurred in some subordinates who are making more than their supervisors. Yep, that's unfortunately the way it goes. But yeah, there's a part in here, and I can bring it up in two weeks, where part of it is to retain them, and it just doesn't make sense. That's not the case. We're 100 for one, 66 minus for the other. Director Stube, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to give you some time, Bob, since you hung in with us.
You want to talk recycling? Is that what you want to talk?
Are we still talking about that? You did that, so I'd forget my question.
Plus, it's late.
Tell me, tell me what we did two weeks ago to help take off the pressure of the foremans within street maintenance. What did we approve here? What was that? Remind me. I want the director to do it on the record.
So you're going to have to remind me what we did two weeks ago.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. I don't know what I did yesterday. What we did a couple of weeks ago is, we already have snowplow drivers that are contracted out within the areas, but then what we did is professional service agreement to hire another layer to help out the foreman ones, and twos, and threes, and whoever else is out there to manage, because they're so busy, is what I heard. Is that correct? Did we approve that contract?
Yeah, so we have 25, I think, residential contractors providing anywhere from 150 to 180 pieces of equipment, which is significantly greater than what it was back in, oh, 2008, 2009, I think, when we had six residential contractors assisting us. So obviously, the residential contractors are providing us a pretty significant amount of resources to handle all of the residential areas that we have. And so what we've added was the, essentially inspectors, to assist us with the residential contractors, to make sure that, one, that they're doing things in accordance with the contract documents. They're going back and checking up to make sure that streets are plowed. So if we do get complaints, we know that there's a level of effort that's been provided. The other thing that they're doing is that we pay the residential contractors based on numerous, per lane mile, per amount of snow, and so when we get an invoice from those 25 contractors, we utilize the outside services to assist us in making sure that those invoices are accurate, so we can make payment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 93, an ordinance to accept the bid from BMI Janitorial Group in the annual amount of $301,492 to provide janitorial services at the Omaha Police Department Headquarters Facility and Satellite Precinct Stations, beginning February 1st, 2022, to January 31st, 2025.
Public hearing on number 93 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 94, an ordinance to approve a three-year renewal of annual subscription services with ShotSpotter Inc. in the amount of $218,247 for each year.
Public hearing on number 94 is today. Proponents, please.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Captain Steve Servini with the Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I'm here on behalf of the department as a proponent for the ShotSpotter contract, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Captain. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents in the room? Seeing none. I believe we have an opponent by Zoom, Mr. Worms. We'll unmute you here in a second.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. First of all, I want to say thank you for opening this up virtually and for hanging in for over four hours. Sure appreciate the work that you all do. My name is Jacob Worms. I'm calling in from Dayton, Ohio. I'm a researcher for Campaign Zero. It's a criminal justice reform nonprofit. Super quick summary about us.
And Jacob, just your address, too, for the record?
Oh, sorry about that. 115 West Monument Avenue, Dayton, Ohio.
Thank you.
So Campaign Zero, we start every campaign with a hunch, but we don't act on it unless the data and research backs it up. And so ShotSpotter is really controversial nationally at the moment, and a lot of those arguments are really emotional. And so I'm going to do my best to just state factual information and let you do with it as you will. The first big thing to know about ShotSpotter is that it doesn't only record loud sounds. It also picks up voices. These sensors are constantly monitoring these communities, and there are examples where recorded conversations have been admitted as court evidence. I'm not as familiar with Nebraska eavesdropping laws, as I'm sure you all are, but please take that into consideration, these privacy concerns for your citizens. Second thing, ShotSpotter has never, I repeat, never tested its technology. All of its accuracy claims, detection claims, that's based off of police feedback. They've never put it through a scientifically valid test. So as you hear statistics about alert numbers, and how many alerts don't have 911 calls, just know that they've never tested this to show the amount of false positives, the amount of false negatives. It's just never been tested. They started a blanket 100% accuracy assumption, and only decrease as police self-report false positives. So the 97% accuracy rate, they just made that up. And then lastly, most importantly, ShotSpotter makes three main promises in its contracts to cities. The first is that it will detect 90% of gunshots within 25 meters. The second is that the alerts will be published within 60 seconds, and the third is that the system will be online 99.9% of the time. And I want to focus on the first, service level commitment. There's an easy way to test and see if this has been fulfilled by the company. If you can ask before December 7th, for Omaha PD to publish the total number of confirmed gunshot victims within the coverage area, outdoor gunshot victims, and then also ask for how many of those had a ShotSpotter alert, this will give you a percentage of the number of gunshot victims detected by ShotSpotter. This number needs to be over 90%, or else ShotSpotter is not fulfilling its contract with Omaha and should not be renewed. So I encourage you to get that data. If the company's as good as it says it is, the data will back it up, and you can vote with a clean conscience. So I thank you for your time, and thanks for the work that you do.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, all closed to public hearing. Capt, anything you want to address that I'll give you a chance to respond if you'd like?
No, thank you. Just if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 95, an ordinance to approve sanitary sewage system revenue refunding bonds taxable series 2022 in the amount of $195 million.
Public hearing on number 95 is today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 96, an ordinance to approve a contract with Hellstream Inc. for providing an adaptive learning platform and training for the Omaha Fire Department for a period of five years with a total cost of $242,122.86.
Public hearing on number 96 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, items 97 through 123 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 6:23.
And happy Thanksgiving, everybody.